Good evening and welcome to the January 19, 2022 regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Ethir Riddick, the 2022 Chair of the Board. I am joined this evening by Vice Chair, Commissioner Linda Hoffler, Commissioner Jack Owens, Commissioner Ray Freeman, and Commissioner Jonathan Cratter. I'm also joined by the County Manager, Tim Wilson, the County Attorney, Philip Godwin, and Clerk to the Board, Jolisa Chestnut. I would now ask Commissioner, Vice Chair Linda Hoffler to lead us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. I have my five. Thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed on this nation, the state of North Carolina, and the county of Gates, and each of us individually. We pray tonight for those who are suffering from COVID that our healing hand will touch them and that this pandemic will soon be in our past. As we come here to do the county's business, help us do it with wisdom and discernment. Help us be able to discuss matters in a civilized manner and with civility and that we all want the best for all the citizens of the county. And thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed on us once again. And let us remember that we all need to be good neighbors in this very difficult time. All these things, we ask in thy name, for thy sake, amen.
Amen.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
That's rich. If you did not get an agenda, they're at the front of the table. If you have not signed up to speak, you can sign up before we get to public comments. I also would like to thank the Commissioners for being here tonight. We've had some sickness amongst the staff and so some of our departmental updates is going to have to be handled by myself and some of the Commissioners. So we'll let you know that when we get to that part of the agenda. Now I ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or any agenda adjustments.
Sir, move.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I don't hear a second and I didn't get a chance to speak to Commissioner Freeman before the meeting. But I believe there's an item on the agenda that I'd like for us to table.
Okay.
And what is that, sir?
The...how far down was that? Well, actually...
Eighteen.
Actually, it's part of a budget amendment. We got it a little bit late and I'd like to see us move that to the February meeting.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Freeman, you agree with that?
I do.
Okay.
I'll second Commissioner Freeman's motion.
Just for clarification, which we have a few budget amendments, Section 2...
018? Is that what it is?
F-22-18.
2E. Okay. Item 2E. Okay. Thank you.
And again, I second Commissioner Freeman's motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All approved? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're going to take off or table until February, Budget Amendment F-22-18, Item 2. Concern agenda, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I make the motion, we approve the consent agenda as adjusted.
And I'll second it. Motion, Madam Chair.
All right. You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Before I ask for public comments, I have a statement to make on behalf of the Board and the staff. The E-911 system in Gates County is currently in Prequiem's County. There is no plan not to bring that E-911 back to the county. That was never the plan. This is temporary. As soon as the County Manager and the EMT Director can hire certified appropriate staff of dispatchers and as soon as we can get updated with required equipment and technology, the system will be back in Gatesville. You will hear an update from the EMT and the County Manager later on in this presentation. But I was asked to make that statement in the front before we even get started. Sometimes things get out before we even have a chance to sit as a governing board and it was never the plan not to have 911 in this county. So I just want to put that out there. Before we continue with the public comments, I have another statement to read. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153.52.1, time is allotted on the agenda for public comments for the purpose of allowing the public commentary on county business. This opportunity is not an open forum to be publicly critical of the performance of any Commissioner or county employee. This time is not the proper forum to usurp the role and authority given to county department heads and the County Manager by personnel policies and procedures to hear, address, and resolve departmental matters in the proper chain of authority. If you are speaking on behalf of an organization or delegation, please identify the group or delegation and the authority by which you have been given to speak on their behalf. Gates County's Board of Commissioners' Bylaws and Code of Ethics recognizes the importance of public participation for legislative functions and so desires to receive community input on items being brought up by the Board or which directly under the legislative jurisdiction of the Board. Therefore, the Gates County Board of Commissioners, in accordance with the Board's Bylaws and Code of Ethics, Section 4, Rule 11, procedures of public comments at the beginning of each regularly scheduled monthly meeting are as follows. Speakers shall sign up to speak at the beginning of the meeting on the designated public comment floor. Speakers must announce their name and their voting district. Speakers shall be given five minutes to speak before the Board. However, the Chair may extend that time if allowed if agreed upon by the Board. A speaker may not speak more than once during the same public comment period. To stay away from repetition, groups of citizens or individuals who are part of the same group may choose a spokesperson to speak on their behalf. Speakers shall only address the Board of Commissioners from the front of the room. Comments shall not be directed toward any staff member, meeting guest, or audience member. The Board shall not entertain questions from the audience and discussions between speakers and members of the audience shall be prohibited. It is a discretion of the Board if public comments are received at any meeting in addition to their regularly scheduled monthly meeting, such as a special meeting, emergency meeting, work sessions, or committee meetings. Speakers shall maintain proper behavior and shall make their comments in a civil manner. Personal attacks and the use of vulgar and obscene language are prohibited and such behavior of the individual will not be tolerated. Also, it is not customary or will it be allowed for the Commissioners to respond to the comments that are being made. We welcome all comments from the citizens. It's good to see so many citizens out tonight, so we look forward to taking notes, hearing you in a proper order. I will call you, I will ask the clerk, Mr. Jolisa Chestnut, to call your name. I will call you to the front, to the podium, as you can give your comments at that time. First person?
Is Majetta Blanchard. Subject 911, land.
I didn't call you first, but anyway.
Come to the mic so we can hear you. This is being live streamed, so if you don't pick in the mic and the people who are watching may see the recording won't be able to hear you, so that's why we ask you to come up.
Okay, I just want to make sure that y'all know the history behind 911 and make sure that you realize that in 1999 or 2000, that our 911 session was with Hertford County. There came a board meeting here in the county and people came back to vote so that 911 could be here in the county by ourselves. I didn't know if everybody knew that, but I wanted to make sure. That was probably my biggest concern is because the other day someone called, there was a fire on Whitehurst, I get tongue tied, Whitehurst. And when they called it into Prequiem's, Prequiem's just told them, Whitehurst. Well, if you're from here and you're a 911 dispatcher, you kind of know the roads. If Prequiem's is going to keep us, then they need to know more about the roads and more icons or things to look out to better educate our fire department, our EMS. Time that they waste is time that we're not helping somebody. And I real...so I've heard, I'm not sure if this is true, that it's going to cost a lot of money to upgrade 911. My thought is that if we're going to spend money in the county, that we spend it on something that could help the whole county, not just certain, you know, a small quantity as far as the land. My thing is to help everyone. I have lived here all my life and I can't imagine living anywhere else. I guess that's just my statement.
Thank you. Will you reset the clock to five minutes, please?
I'm going to wipe down just for safety purposes after each speaker. Next speaker is Arnold Bright. Well, the subject is E-911.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to just kind of come back to 911 and I know it's pretty much settled. I've been involved with 911. I made the first presentation to the Board back in 1999 and I've got all my paperwork here to back that up. And at that time, our Commissioners looked at us like we were crazy and we didn't know what we're talking about. We're fine with the ring down telephones, it's okay to put a string to a can, I don't know. But it was kind of bad. In 1999, Belinda Gurkens with then Central Link and well, then Sprint Carolina Telephone, myself and her supervisor made the first presentation. And that was somewhere around January 7, 2000, thereabouts. And the total price that we came up with, believe it or not, to get started was $65,000. That's been a long time ago. Prior to that, everything was in Hertford County. I've got the prices for the generator that was put out in front of the building. I was very much involved with that through then Sprint Carolina Telephone. I helped install the equipment, the 911 equipment, and I have worked on that equipment up until the day I retired from Central Link two and a half years ago. So the backbone, the fiber optic network, how 911 works, E-911 works, I'm very familiar with. So it's...that was my job to keep that up. My concern is, I think in the beginning, we as firemen, and there's a lot of brothers and sisters fire EMS that are sitting in the back and I don't necessarily express their opinion, I'm expressing Arnold Bright's opinion. We're a family and things changed and we were kind of left in the dark and I know we're contractors, so to speak. You talk critical infrastructure. There are three things when a business comes here looking for: water, sewage, people. That's the first three. After that, in that critical infrastructure, is firefighting for their fire rating. No business is going to come here with an inadequate fire service, law enforcement, sheriff's office, and paramedics. We have all those things. Our fire service right now, if you had to pay for it, is more than the county budget. And take my word, it doesn't...what we receive does not nowhere near meet the needs we have. And I realize that it's going to cost money to keep 911 here. We have to update. We're so far behind the eight ball on this, it's pitiful. There's places in this county, our radios don't work, we can't talk to them. Sometimes the pagers don't go off. We're still working in old, outdated equipment. My desire and want for everybody else is that when this system comes back, update it. Spend the money that it takes to get us into the 22nd century or whatever is coming up. We have to be able to communicate. It's a matter of life and death. A deputy that doesn't, cannot talk with his radio in a far corner of Boon Town, you don't know what he's up against. He needs communications. A firefighter on the scene needs communications. It's critical. It is life and death. And it could be to my firefighter, if I call for a medic or officer that we're on scene, we need instantaneously help. We need a dispatcher that understands whether it's here or anywhere else. And I do know from my job that the state of North Carolina is pushing regional 911 centers, which it can work if you employ people from every county. Somebody has to know where Key's Crossroads is or have heard of it. Somebody has to know where Boon Town is if that's all they get on the radio. And right now with cell phones, you might get Suffolk, you might get Chawan, you might get Elizabeth City. It's a mismatch where you're at and what RIS you're talking on. Please, 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 spend the money invested into infrastructure that we have here in our 911 center and in our firefighters and sheriffs and deputies and the water system. If you want growth, those are necessary things that we have to have. Please do not underfund it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Patrick Martin.
Good evening, members. I'm coming up here as a concerned citizen and hopefully I can voice the concerns of some of these citizens that are afraid to come up here. First of all,
Excuse me.
I do not have COVID.
Your voting district?
I'm Gatesville.
Gatesville.
Gatesville, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so I don't have COVID. This is a voice thing that I have in my cancer, so bear with me. First time I've ever heard or seen Arnold Bright. I'm in the fire department. I've been 31 years in Chesapeake. I also handle our communications as far as radio maintenance, repairs on all our equipment. We even keep our VHF backup system. We have a state-of-the-art 800 system, but we keep our VHF system. Reason being is because that system, 800, if it gets a little out of whack, it's totally useless. We've had it happen. Ask Virginia Beach. They don't have a backup. They have nothing. So we need to invest in either keeping, updating our VHF system or move on to another system that provides communication. I listen to this radio all the time and I hear the constant mistakes made by other dispatchers from another county dispatching in our county. Wrong stations getting paged out, wrong locations, all that stuff, time sensitive stuff. The other thing is we have COVID money, $1.4 million. You ask certain people, they don't know where the money went. They don't know anything about the money. That money could be used to help with existing structure, with infrastructure. We've got hydrants all over the county, not just in Gatesville, all over the county that do not work. Fire Department filled up a tanker right here in Gatesville. I had zero water pressure at my house. Why is that? Because nobody's investing in our infrastructure at all. We have questionable hiring and firing. We have questionable stuff. It's all about appearance. Right now, people say we look like the city of Portsmouth and that's no joke. They're saying that to me and, you know, I know what Portsmouth goes through. And we just need to clean up our stuff. People have posted on there, identify needs of water system, fire department, sheriff, EMS, fund deputy salaries. Nobody's going to want to work here if we're not paying the people right. It's comparable to what our area is and what we can afford. Refund the water enterprise, funds that were not reimbursed through legal maneuvers in 2019. Invest in what we have and make it up to date. Improve services to our seniors. There's just so much, you can go on and on and on. Invest in the rec center. It's got some dilapidation in it. The time that we meet today, why is it 5:30? Who made...I know you made that decision a long time ago and there was one person that made a discussion about it and then it was crickets for everybody else. 6:30 is when the time needs to be so that people driving home from work can have time to get here and voice their concerns. There'd probably be more people in here if they had time to get here. But y'all changed it to 5:30 and nobody said anything. One person made that change and from what I understand, one person does not have the authority to do that. It has to be a majority vote. I'm sorry, I'm blunt, to the point, but when you have cancer, you just don't care about who you piss off and everything else. And I thought it kind of funny that the Code of Ethics was mentioned before everybody got a chance to talk because those are out here, there are some ethical issues with this Board and they know what they are because everybody's talking about it. And people are getting tired of it. They're listening. You've got it live streaming now so everybody can hear what's going on here. When you make...the morale in the county is down. You can't hire people because nobody wants to work here because they're threatened with their jobs. It should not be like that. Reason dispatch...reason we have a dispatch crisis is because somebody was let go, wasn't told they were let go, and then others quit. Therefore, you've got nobody that's going to show up to work. Why would they want to work here? Substandard equipment. Treat it like dirt. That's just...and it's a systemic issue and it starts from the top down. If you have a problem with a deputy, you go to the sheriff. If you have a problem with a firefighter, you go to the chief. It all starts from the top. So the changes start from the top. Doesn't mean you have to leave and we want you replaced. It just means you need to see what the appearance of this county and the Commissioners look like to the people out here that are watching this, reading this, and commenting on it. They're tired, they're fed up, they want this COVID money spent on stuff that needs to be done in this county, not desks, not furniture, not streetlights. They want infrastructure and let's give it to them. They're not opposing purchase of land for somewhere to build something on. They're opposing the land area that's being built on. It is not sufficient for what y'all want to put on it. People in the county that have lived here for years have said, come up here and said, "Sorry, that's a bad idea. You shouldn't do it. It's not going to support it." Army Corps of Engineers did a report on that land. Nobody seems to pay attention to that. Let's just go ahead and buy that land. So what's behind the scenes going on? Is there something going on behind that we don't know about, something getting swept onto the rug? It sure seems by appearance that's what's going on. So my suggestion is to clean it up.
Next is Ray Campbell, general concern.
Good evening. A couple of things that I'd like to call your attention to and for you to consider, meeting times. I would like to see it moved back to 6:30 also, just to make it more easier for people to work, to attend to meetings. And also what I'd like for you to consider is moving some of these meetings back to the courthouse across the street. It's much easier for people to get in and out of and to me, it's a more secure location. I'm here tonight to express my concerns with our county government. I have a copy of the email that I sent to you on October 11. This email was in reference to my total disgust with a lock being put on the dispatch office door without any discussion with me, other than it was deemed an unsecure location. An office in my courthouse, I'm locked that up. This is the line that I've...in my email. "I love my county. I love what I do, but I believe there's an element here now that has hell been on Terry's County park. Chaos and division. County employees being terminated. County employees leaving. Shutting down 911 center without any discussion with employees or myself. A discussion had about removing me from office. How about an outside attorney looking over documents for us?" Why? Why is an outside attorney being paid and why is this happening? The absolute division of the sheriff's office with county government. Total destruction and total loss of respect in regards to that relationship. You don't need to think about it for a minute. Anything to be proud of? The dismantling of the water department. You cannot let this happen. You've got a valued county employee that has worked for this county for 14 years and even served as an interim county manager and you're going to boot her out of her office and move her to the water plant across from the dump on Water Plant Road? Don't let this happen. We as a county are headed in the wrong direction. You as Commissioners can change this or you can ride the sinking ship down altogether. I love my county. I love what I do. I took an oath to protect and serve this county and that's exactly what I'm going to do. I'm not going to stand by and watch it run to the ground. Working for one's own agenda will not work here.
I'm going to call for a two-minute recess. I need to talk to the county attorney. You standing in recess, Mr. Curry? Two minutes. Two minutes. Next speaker.
John Tell Kit Trail.
Last day. Good evening. So many issues, so little time. So my first issue is the meeting time. Almost two years ago, across the street, the resolution was made to, uh, to change the, uh, the meeting time to six thirty on Wednesdays, to change the day and the time. Twenty-five years ago, I spoke multiple times in the commissioners' meeting where the dispatcher should be tonight, over in the old courthouse. We didn't even have dispatch in Gates County back then, at that time. So I was, I was very pleased, and we ended up even changing the meeting of our fire department, uh, business meetings, because it would have interfered, it would have been tonight. The Firefire Chiefs sent the following letter to the commissioners and county manager. They all received this the week after Christmas. Open letter to Gates County Commissioners and County Manager. We, the chiefs of the Firefire Departments in Gates County, are concerned about the revelations that the county manager had been exploring with neighboring counties on collaboration on a joint dispatch center without any notice to or input from the agencies or the public the Gates County Communications serves. We are concerned about the chaotic events of late where Gates County Communications was abruptly moved to the capacity of Proquemans County, and the multiple disruptions that ensued. We are highly concerned about the potential effects of these actions to the fire department's ratings with North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal that save Gates County citizens and businesses millions of dollars in insurance premiums each year. These decisions that were made did not provide the highest level, highest professional level of service to all the first responders and the citizens of our community. We ask that the county manager and the county commissioners do all in their power to restore Gates County Communications to our communication center and the Gates County courthouse as soon as possible. So, I think enough's been said about that, I've got a lot more, but I'm not gonna be able to get through it all. You said you want it back, and, and, and we'll, we believe you, but let, let's, let's get it done. I will say that terminating an employee via certified mail is just unacceptable. Gates County's better than this. And apparently, the personnel ordinance is for the employees and not the county. It appears to the public that Gates County has been made at least a couple of times vulnerable to lawsuits. Why was a fully certified, part-time dispatcher recently denied an open full-time? Excuse me, why was a fully certified, full-time dispatcher denied a part-time position? And then, more recently, why was a fully certified, part-time dispatcher denied a full-time position? I was told that this last position was the last one needed for two-seat service back to Gates County. Gates County Dispatch Center needs major equipment and building upgrades. My reaction as a taxpayer and a fire chief is, what are you waiting for? Your primary responsibility is to your citizens, and what is more important than the department and the center to dispatch his first responders to county citizens? No one is gonna complain about you spending money on a communication center, or emergency services, or a forty-plus-year-old water system. Spend the money on our existing infrastructure before risky projects. Is my time up? I still got? I am against that, so I propose the communications be a standalone department. The emergency manager, fire marshal position does not have enough time to manage a dispatch center or its supervisor if they're doing the work necessary for the primary responsibilities of that job. I also propose a nine-one-one communications board to be formed to advise the communications director. This board should, at a minimum, be comprised of the sheriff, a county firefighter chosen by the Firefire Chiefs, the EMS chief, and at least one non-county employee citizen. Think about that, please. I am against the reorganization plans outlined by the county manager at the last meeting. I believe things work well in those departments like they have been. I don't have the time at the moment to further explain my position. I encourage you to do what is necessary to allow advance payments at the customer service window. This should have been addressed in December as it was directed in the October meeting. I am totally against the proposed land purchase as presented at our prior meeting. I believe this is a poor choice in the use of county funds at this time, especially when they're pressing issues with existing departments, infrastructure, and other areas. I also question the legality of holding a vote three months after the public hearing was closed. On the personnel ordinance, again, I question holding a vote two months after a public hearing was closed. Make your choices wisely. Thank you for your time.
Next, Ms. Emily Truman.
Good evening, my name's Emily Truman, I'm in the Gatesville voting district. I have far more to say than we have time for, but here we go. Reorganization of Planning and Inspections, Water, Customer Service, Financial Services Department. Will it cost us money? You, county manager, said it would. We don't have the money for reorganization.
Ms. Truman.
I was stating a quote, ma'am.
Ms. Truman, now, we've been very patient with everyone in here. Um, I made the statement that if you have issues within the department, to take them to your department head with the personnel policy. Everyone in here understands personnel policy and confidentiality. There are certain things we just can't talk about. Now, you enumerated some more issues.
Ma'am.
I'm not gonna take your time, I'm making a good time back up there.
I was not addressing nine-one-one at all.
No, 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 I'm not talking about nine-one-one.
I'm not addressing, um...
I'm not talking about nine-one-one. You started enumerating, again, issues that are departmental matters. So, start, you can start...
I don't have a departmental head to go to as a citizen. This is me as a citizen, I'm not here as a county employee, ma'am.
You gotta make that distinction, you, you're here as a citizen, okay?
I am here as a citizen, not a county employee right now. I am not on Gates County's time at this moment. So if I may continue. Will it cost us money? You said it would. We don't have money for reorganization when we have so many other needs within our community. Will it lower the already detrimentally low morale of the employees? Quite possibly. You've done an extremely good job of proving your employees' worth to you, which isn't very much. Land purchase? The vast majority do not support this. You speak for us, then prove it. Your vote counts, prove it. I'm gonna give you some numbers here regarding the utility bill payment in general. Per the NCACC County Mapbook of 2021, twenty percent of the citizens in Gates County are over sixty-five years of age. Gates County is number eight for the lowest average weekly income in the state, only seven hundred per week on average. Sixteen point four percent of the households without a computing device in their home to even afford them the opportunity to pay online should they arrive early. Fourteen percent of our county is food insecure. Twenty-one percent of the children in this county are in poverty. Say all that to say this, preventing residents from paying ahead when they are able is a detriment to many. If you don't know what it's like to live week to week, and I would assume most of you don't, I, I could be wrong, perhaps you should sit down with members of our community that fit into the numbers I just read, because I promise you, sitting money aside is not a possibility. Charging sixty dollars for a reconnect fee that should be at the very most a quarter of that when a person is late on payment is likely one of those reasons that I listed above. Not only is it unacceptable, it's unethical, speaking of ethics. I also want to ask, when you're going through these reorganization discussions, are you considering the people that you are affecting? Are you considering Ms. Hendricks and Mr. Mitchell? County employees that are serving us well? They're our neighbors. They don't just work here, they live here, they are our neighbors. I also have been asked, and was not going to do this to mention, but I am going to ask, per this weather event that we have coming up, our current emergency management director does not live in Gates County. Will he be required to stay in county during a severe weather event? Because many have concerns of him being able to come, should it be necessary. I had a lot more written down, but right now, I'm just gonna speak. You wanted me to point out that I'm a county employee, I should have gone to my departmental head. Well, at this point, I know, day to day, hour by hour, email by email, my department head could change. During this conversation, I could be receiving an email telling me that's changed. That's what happened before. I wasn't gonna speak on this. But I must say, when you were willing to make such a important decision and to take action on it the day after a commissioners' meeting, so perhaps people have a month to cool down, when you're supposed to be planning time off to go out of town, when you're supposed to be out of office so no one can access you, that's unethical. You're requiring us to drive to Proquemans. Not a big deal, you know what, I'm gonna do it as long as you all permit me, I won't be quitting. Um, because I love the citizens. And that is the only reason that any one of us left is still there. And the ones that aren't there, which I do want to make note, one wasn't there due to a letter of termination. One person quit, one. I don't know what you've been told, one person quit. One person who had already been speaking with supervisors and with the finance department about her concern, about her changing from full-time to part-time, was not accepted. She was basically told her resignation from full-time was accepted as a complete across-the-board resignation. If we are hurting for dispatchers, why? I believe it was just mentioned that we have a fully qualified dispatcher that could step into a full-time position now, she's a part-time employee. She's been overlooked. You truly want us back in this community? You truly care about the people of this community? I don't believe you. You have yet to show us that you care about a single person on this side of that desk.
Ann Howell.
I'm Ann Howell of the U.S. area. What I have to say maybe seems silly, but I noticed two or three months ago that the second citizen's comments was no longer on the agenda. Uh, we come and sit through these meetings, and we listen to what you have to say. Comments, some we agree with, some we don't agree with. Uh, if we would like to have something to say under the second comment, uh, there's no chance for that anymore. I just feel like that for the courtesy of the ones that do come to this meeting and sit through it, uh, if they have a question, would like to have an answer tonight, or at least let you know what our concern is, rather than waiting till a month from now when you figure we've already forgotten about what we wanted to ask. So I just wonder if there's any way that you could just ask, does anyone have a comment? If not, that's your choice, thank you. I'm hoping I'm saying this right, Noni Minga?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Noni Minga. I know it's a little weird, I, my mama said I was so ugly that she had to give me a name so the girls could remember me. But that's the lightest side of tonight, isn't it? I see a lot of people here are concerned about nine-one-one. I am, I'm sure you are, but you as leaders need to lead. That's the problem. Uh, I understand someone went in and asked someone to resign and fired them, and the system went down. If that's the case, how come you folks didn't go pick up the telephone? Why'd y'all stay home? That's what leaders do. If you're not going to lead, please follow me out tonight, okay? You got someone here that was taught in college that when you go and you get power, the first thing you do is you get five other people to do your job. And then you teach those people how to get five other people, and so forth. That's called power. That's not leadership. There's a difference. If you want power, go this way. If you want leadership, go this way. Because the difference means safety to these people. And myself. Second thing I'd like to speak about, six hundred thousand dollars, I believe, for land? Okay, it's worth three fifty, but you're gonna pay six hundred. In any type of commercial land deal where you build on it, the price of the land is only somewhere ten to thirty percent of the value of the project. So you're looking at, what, one and a half to three million dollars? Y'all got that kind of money? I heard someone in the paper say, we're gonna build townhouses. Well, we're, the government would tell you we're at eight percent inflation. The real number is compared to nineteen eighty is closer to sixteen percent. They don't count gas and food anymore. So once you build this, ask yourself a question. Let's say we could build ten townhouses. You got ten people that can afford seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars a month? I don't think so. People gonna move to Gates County for those townhouses? I don't think so. So ask yourself that question. What would do with the land? Have you got a, a developer? Which one of y'all are capable of developing land on that scale? Have you done it? I don't think so. When you look at buying land to invest, it's called investment, and you want ROI, return of investment. What kind of return will the citizens get? Who have paid taxes for this? I don't know. Do you? That's the question. Do you, sir? Do you? No, it's a good idea. Oh, people go to mill pond. Well, they ain't gonna stop there, they're gonna get the gas somewhere else. They're gonna get the food somewhere else. If you do put a gas station in there, the man on the corner down here, his gas station's gone because you subsidized him. You're not in the business of business, you're in the business of government. It makes no sense to go and take six hundred thousand dollars that's burning a hole in your pockets and put it on a project that's going to expand by at least eight percent each year. For how many years out? I don't know. Do you? You can't predict the future. But sound business does not take money that you have in reserve and spend it on a wishful project. It's called wish. Okay? That's like, um, the Yellow Brick Road, most people don't know it. The Yellow Brick Road was about gold because the banks came in and they were trying to take over. The real rich, that's what some of y'all, I believe, think you are, real rich. You got six hundred thousand dollars. You got $600,000. Put it on the 911 system. Take the $600,000 and buy some good overseas bonds or something. Don't go out here and think that you've got a pocketbook you can just spin, spin, spin. Because you're never going to get the money back. How long? 30 years? If you're going to be the developer, or you're going to find someone, what kind of incentives are you going to give them to come in and put that big septic system in there? Because townhouses do not have enough land for an individual sewer system.
Thank you, Mr. Minga. We appreciate your time. We really do.
Is that my time?
That's your time. We have other people waiting.
Lloyd, you mean I can go home and take a nap?
You sure can.
All right.
You sure can.
Please.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next.
That's it.
Oh, okay. Now we're down to administrative reports. The tax report. Mr. Hill, are you here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
First off, I'd like to thank the citizens of Gates County for being so patient with the tax department their last few weeks. We've been understaffed at our busiest time of the year. We appreciate the patience and the time that you've spent with us trying to get your taxes paid. We've had a busy month, as you can see in the collections report. Our total collections for the month of December 21, we collected $2.419 million in December, which was, puts us about 79% of where we were. Last year, we were 72%. This year, we're 79% collection-wise. Zikeas funds are almost 13,000 of that. Barring any COVID issues, some from, someone from ZLS will be here on the 27th for foreclosure auction, which will happen at 10 o'clock at the new courthouse. DMV funds remain high, about $73,000 in DMV funds for the month. Just to give you a look back, between December 1st of last year, I'm sorry, December 1st of 2021 to January 5th, which was the deadline to pay without penalty, the tax office collected $3.127 million. Have any questions for me?
Any question for Mr. Hill with the tax report? Here and none, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And we have departmental reports. You have them in your packet. Do you have any questions before I call up? As I said before, Ms. Outland, Kim Outland is our finance director. She's homesick today. So you won't, you have it in your packet. So if you have questions, you can send them to the county manager or to Ms. Kim. I hope she, I hope she gets well soon. But usually she does a really good job. You see what she's sent to us. So make note of questions you may have for her. If you have questions now, the county manager may be able to assist you, but he's not the finance director.
I do, I do have one question.
Okay.
I was going through the line item. And I know we made a budget amendment last month for a sum of $5,000. But the legal expenses and retainers was still a thousand over budget. And I was just wondering where, what these funds are being allocated for, what they're spent on. And wouldn't mind having a detailed document of what they are being spent on.
Kim, or any finance staff would get that to you. She will get that to you. As a matter of fact, we are doing our budget now. And the budget hearing will start in February. During that process, each one of the departments will come forward and go over their budget, prior budget, what they hope to see or want to see in the budget. And you will have a chance, all the commissioners will have a chance to ask questions by line item. So if you hold that until probably the first or second week in February, but we'll ask her about that in the meantime. But that's when the budget hearings start. Those also will be televised. You'll get to see, you'll get to hear what's in the budget, how the money was spent, and all of that because we're working on 2022 budget right now.
Okay. And the other question I have, do we have a retainer contract with Mr. Goblin?
We have a retainer with.
Contract.
Counting.
Signed.
Counting.
So that can be provided?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I would like to have a copy of that also.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else from anyone else? So we can make a list of Ms. Kim when she comes back. If not, when you get home and see other things, you just put them, you know, put them in an email and send them to Kim Outland, copy the county manager. In lieu that we don't have Ms. Kim here, I'm going to ask for Jason Sample to come forward. Jason is the EMT director. And he's going to give us a report for 911.
Hi, good evening. Heather, the interim supervisor is up here also.
Her name is?
Heather Ceny.
Heather.
Ceny, C-E-N-Y.
Heather Ceny. Okay.
So good afternoon and good evening. I've heard, you know, the comments already. And just to let y'all know, this situation has been going on for years inside that 911 center. This is nothing new. The equipment, you know, it didn't happen overnight. And it's not going to be cured overnight. And it's going to be expensive in the grand scheme of things. I've been in contact with the state 911 board for the last couple of months. And this is a statement from the state 911 board, and I quote, "Gates County has not spent any money on upgrades on the main 911 center that I can see since 2015." We need to go back and do a little more research. Couple of days later, they called back. We went back and looked and could not find anything in our records for the main center. The furniture inside the 911 center has been there since 2009. The recorder, 2010. The CAD server, 2010. That did have an upgrade in 2012. The workstations, 2012. And the chairs have been purchased in 2013. The only money that we can see that was used was for recertifications. Like I said, right now, we have hired three full-time personnel. One of those is fully certified. We've hired another part-timer that is fully certified. We have two that are in training right now. They just finished their EMD course. They have a 40-hour DCI course and then another 40-hour course after that, which is the Emergency Telecommunicator Course. Or we can opt in to do the Share Standards. Once we have them trained fully, which will be by the middle of February 18th, they should have everything by February 18th, we'll have the correct staffing to come back to Gates County. I ordered a new CAD server, which is the minimum piece of equipment that we need right now to come back to Gates County. That's been ordered in the last 24 hours. So effectively, we could be back as long as staffing does not change from what we have right now and we get that new CAD server in. Oh, there's CAD server. We can be back here by the end of February. That is the goal right this second. Now, that's just the minimum piece of equipment that is needed for us to come back here. There's also, again, you have furnitures, server, the recorder, you have chairs. There's a lot of other things that need to be done inside that center. This is just the minimum that we need to come back. We're in the process of getting estimates right now, broken down into subcategories, so we can find out exactly what the state covers and what the county's going to have to cover. And that's basically what we're waiting on right now. But we do have equipment on the way and we do have staffing that's being trained. So the way it looks right now, hopefully by the end of February, we'll be back here. Again, for Quinmons, we owe a lot to them for even taking us in. They've gone above and beyond to help us out. They have had a couple of dispatchers work for us under, under Perqumons because some of our dispatchers wouldn't volunteer to come in. So that's kind of what we're dealing with right now. But we do have staff. We do have one piece of equipment coming. And we will be coming back to Gates County. And hopefully we have all that done by the end of February. But again, once we get these estimates and find out what the breakdown is going to be on what the state covers and what the county's going to have to come up with, then I will give that to Mr. Wilson.
Any questions of Mr. Sample?
One, all right, well, probably, probably a few, actually, Madam Chairman. When, when was Perqumons made aware of the coming?
They were made aware on the day we moved.
17th?
That morning, yes, sir. I, I, that morning when things happened, I had literally 12 minutes to make a decision. So service was not lost. We never did lose service. It was kind of, kind of sketchy there for a little bit. But Cho'wan took the calls originally. They were handling all the calls coming in. And basically, somebody would call 911 from here. It would be answered in Cho'wan. They would forward that information over here and then we'd get dispatched out.
Right.
So that's, you know, that's how that went. By 6:00 PM that evening, everything had been switched to Perqumons. So in a 12-hour timeframe, we had everything in Perqumons, at least. In the very beginning, yes, there were some IT issues that did go on. But when you're moving something to that, that capacity, you know, you are going to have some IT issue somewhere because, again, our equipment is old.
And you expect issues when you make a move.
I, I don't see, I didn't know what to expect when the things moved. You know, what happened, happened. And.
I heard you say. Excuse me.
Yes.
Good. And I heard you say something about the sheriffs opt out or opt in with the sheriff's standards?
That, that there's two different options that you can choose from when it comes to, after they get their certifications. They have their EMD certification, the DCI certification. And you can choose Share Standards or you can go to the emergency, was it the ETC, the Emergency Telecommunicator Course. There's two different courses. Everybody hired after 2019 is supposed to do one of those 40-hour courses. Nobody in Gates County has that.
Okay. And I heard you say you've got three full-time?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, we have, we hired three full-timers and one part-timer.
And one part-timer?
Yes, sir.
Any indication on how long?
February 18th, they will all be certified. The two that are not certified will have all their certifications by February 18th.
By February 18th?
Yes, sir.
So actually, from December 17th through February, we would have been in Perqumons County. And cost, how about cost to Perqumons County?
I don't have any numbers for that right now, sir.
Who would they be provided to? Do you know?
That would be between county managers and finance.
Do you have a ballpark figure at all?
I don't have a ballpark figure for it, sir, no.
No. I mean, there'll be discussions in terms of what additional overhead Perqumons experienced as far as hosting us there at their dispatch center, their PSAP. And, and no, we, we have not engaged in, in those discussions.
Why not?
Because we've been focused on, on operations.
Don't we need to know how much it's going to cost?
Well, my, my first priority was, was to make sure that the operations, you know, were not discontinued. It, I mean, it's a difficult situation. I mean, the state even said this was an unprecedented situation that they hadn't seen before. And we've been meeting weekly with Perqumons and, and the state trying to resolve these issues.
Right.
In terms of operation.
And I, and I read that and had kind of kept up with that. And we appreciate you coming back off vacation. However, I think I did have to talk to the county, to the chairman about calling you back in from vacation.
Mr., when I talked to the county manager, he was already planning to come back. I just called.
Okay. You didn't tell me that.
Well, I haven't talked to you since then. But when you called me, I did call the county manager and he ensured me that he was coming back from his vacation. So he immediately returned to rectify the situation.
Right. Because I, I know when you and I spoke, I, I made a note or two about, you said county manager already had everything, all MOUs and everything in place.
I was speaking for myself. I would have not spoken to him when we talked. I took notes also. And you asked me, shouldn't he come back? I said I would make sure. I would call him. And that's what I did. When I called him on his vacation, he informed me that he was coming back to the county to continue. Because someone had said somewhere, I don't know what, Facebook or whatever, something was going on. And I asked you about that. And you said what you had heard. So let me just say this, as we're discussing the, the issues, and don't be very targeted with this. We don't watch Facebook. Facebook has prior knowledge of things. And they know things that they think they know. But we can't say anything because most of it is confidential personnel. When it is not, we address it. When you see us at this table, this is the governing body. We do not gather unless this is an emergency. And emergency is very defined by general statute. So we have to call one at a time, text and everything. That's what he's talking about. And try to do the best we can because we just can't willy-nilly gather. It's not, that's, that's an open meeting. We have to discuss in open meeting. We have to take action in open meeting when we're together. At least three of us have to be present for an official meeting. So during this, this situation, it was phone calls, text messages, whatever we had to do to make sure things went well. You just heard Mr. Sample say that within, what, 12 hours? 12 hours, we had things in place so that we could keep the public safe. The first, the first idea, the first thing that this board thinks about is the public health and safety of the citizens, all citizens. And it may not look like it, but we're doing what we can with what we have, with information we gather at the time. So yes, you called me. Yes, I called him. Yes, he returned immediately.
And that's what I want to do, is want to thank him for returning because it was an emergent situation. And I didn't feel like anyone should have left for vacation at that time, myself. So that was, that was my reason for calling you. Because it had turned into an emergent situation when our communication center basically had failed and gone elsewhere. And I don't know that the entire, our citizen body knew that at that time. I don't do Facebook, so I don't, I, I do hear about it and people do read me what's on Facebook. But I had heard about it through, through our fire chiefs, through our citizenry, and through our deputy sheriffs. So that's how I knew. And I thought, my goodness, if something like that happens, shouldn't we have been prepared? Shouldn't someone have known that if I do this, then that's going to happen? And I call that the what-if situation. What if I get rid of somebody? And then what if the other things happen? So, you know, my, my entire status is be prepared. Be prepared for that what-if. And what-if means something else, too. But what-if.
Anyone else on the commission board, board of commissioners?
Yes. I'd like to ensure that all our part-time staff, if they're certified and they're eligible, working with us through this emergency situation, sticking with us, being loyal to the county, they need to have, they may, need to make sure they are reviewed for the positions also.
I agree. Ms. Ceny, you, you've been very patient. You have any comments before?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else from any other commissioners?
And just, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Owens?
Yep.
Speaking to the mic.
Just for clarification, issues, I've been in the 911 center before. And as a matter of fact, I, I went in there right after they got the tables that you can elevate, which was, I don't know what year that was, maybe 14 or something like that. But anyway, if someone like myself or someone who does not work in 911 were to be allowed to walk in there tonight, they would see that everything is clean and, and they wouldn't know that the technology is old. You see what I'm saying? So I, I say that to say that none of these items, not blaming you, you're new there, not blaming anybody else, just making a fact, a factual statement. I wrote down the things you said that we need, technology, CAD server, and, and the other items. None of that ever was requested by this board to fund. It was never, nobody ever came to the board and said, replace our technology, replace the CAD server, replace the chairs, or, or anything. So, because if they had, this board of five would have approved it. Okay? We feel the same way about the 911 center as everybody else. If somebody had said, we need to fund this, it's critical. Phone conversation that I had with someone two nights ago at home A phone conversation that I had with, um, someone, uh, two nights ago at home, talking about the 911 center, called and were concerned, and I got more than one call. Um, but I, I told the person, all the things that were, were mentioned, the sheriff's department, the rescue, fire department, it all starts with the 911 center. When you have a, a issue, you don't call, you don't really call the sheriff's department, you call 911. So it all starts there. So anybody would, would know that this is critical. It's critical. But we sit here in, in this position, just on this, just on this, what I'm talking about here, about what updates are needed, not knowing that there was a need. And, um, a, a, and again, if I, if I walked in there tomorrow and you'd not told me that there was a need, it would look like a nice 911 center that was clean and, you know, the, all the material was sitting there, it looks like everything's fine. So, and I don't really say, I say that for clarification, um, just so that the right factual information will be out there for the people to understand the position that we find ourselves in, really, at the snap of a finger, we found ourselves in this situation. So, um, that's all I have to say on that.
Commissioner Hoffler?
Uh, a couple of things. I think we need to thank Perquimmons for stepping up. I happened to see their county manager, uh, and I thank them for taking, you know, helping us in a time of need. He said, well, we're trying to be a good neighbor. And I said, I hope if it was reversed, we would be a good neighbor as well. Um, things happen. And no one can predict when it's going to happen. Yes, it might be when you're on vacation, but you didn't know it was going to happen. You know, but you responded, we got it up, and I'll say thank you for the job you've done. And there is a lot of misinformation out there. When it's out there, it stays out there forever. Uh, but I hope people have listened to what has been said tonight, um, on your part. 12 hours to get it transferred, and I'll, I think it's remarkable.
County manager?
In, in terms of, uh, Commissioner Owens, uh, I, I know, I mean, no one, no one faults the board. Um, I'm relatively new here, uh, so was, so was Mr. Sample. I, I did meet, uh, pretty, pretty soon after I, uh, was here with, with the, uh, with the dispatching supervisor. And the only needs that she advised me that she had, that these were requests that had not been received before, was that she wished, uh, to have a lock placed on the PSAP door because the PSAP is to be a secure facility. Uh, the state has told me they recognize that. I've had some experience with PSAP. I understand that as well. I, I, I grant that request is, as coming from that supervisor, that that lock be purchased, that she pick it out, and to have building and grounds install it immediately. She also complained about rollover calls coming into the PSAP, that she did not believe that that was a proper use of the PSAP. I told her I would investigate that as well. But she did not make me aware of any other equipment needs that, that were required, uh, for that. So those, those were the needs. It was, it was securing the facility, the PSAP, because in event of emergency, you do not want somebody to take control of your PSAP. It was rollover calls, and it was also about unauthorized personnel being in the PSAP. And that was one of the reasons why she also wanted the door, uh, the door lock, which she said that she had been requested and denied on previous occasion. So I, I honored those requests. In terms of the cost, um, we are negotiating, it's in your packet, uh, to change our backup PSAP from its current location at the EOC to Perquimmons. And in the, the discussions that we've had, and Mr. Sample corrected me if, if I don't have all of this, since we've gone through a lot, uh, of discussion mainly with operations, that this would also be used in terms of how reimbursement would be done in any future event, that the same formula in this backup formula would be used. And you will find that in Section 3, and it speaks that Perquimmons agrees for a full-time period not to exceed 90 days to host gate 911 staff at the Perquimmons 911 Center. During this period, Gates will pay Perquimmons the equivalent of one full-time telecommunicator along with other operational expenses as agreed upon and documented by the county managers of both counties. During this time, there will be weekly progress meetings, which we have been holding between both counties, in this particular instance, that is. Time extensions may be negotiated as needed, meaning, meaning the 90 days. So while we do have the framework for how those costs will be, um, arrived, we have not, because the focus has been on operational issues, uh, to, to come up with those actual costs, and I will have to receive those operational costs from Perquimmons. But, but that is, that's the formula that's been put in place for the, for the reimbursement purposes. And it's, it's the same as, as found in, in this agreement.
Yes, sir.
Since you had addressed, uh, Ms. Seeny, I would, I'd like to, to, uh, clarify one thing with her, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Heather, uh, during, uh, I guess it was probably after the 19th or so of, of, uh, December, I had gotten, received a call that you were concerned about some things, and I gave you a call. Is that correct? And in that call, I'd ask you, what were the problems? What were you having difficulty with? And would you please write me an email designing those problems?
Correct.
Uh, and then subsequently, you did that, which was great. You also copied, I think, other commissioners. And I had not asked for that. And I got, uh, I got discipline to a degree about that, is why did I ask for that to be sent out? And I said, I didn't. I just talked with you about it and emailed me, and then I would share that with the rest of commissioners. Is that what you recall?
I was as well talked to about that.
You were?
Yes.
Very well. Uh, and, and in that, you had lined up the, some problems you existed and had, had existed.
Yes, sir.
Some other things. Very well. I appreciate you doing this.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other comments before we move on from the commissioners? Thank you again, Mr. Sample, Ms. Seeny. I think I pronounced it right. Seeny?
Yep.
Okay, where am I? If there are no other questions about the department reports, I insulted some people going page by page. Since we don't have our finance director here, uh, we don't have any, uh, public hearing. Old Business Reorganization and Planning and Inspection, Water, Customer Service, and Financial Services Department. That's in your packet. Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as, as you stated, uh, this is under Old Business Reorganization of Planning and Inspections, Water, Customer Service, and Financial Service Departments. Uh, I had on previous occasion, uh, at the request of the chairman, uh, presented reorganization of certain select departments. As, as this board knows, my, uh, my original recommendation, which I made on more than one occasion, was that there should be a, a countywide, um, reorganization or an organizational and staffing plan, uh, that, that unfortunately, you know, did not gain traction, but that's the, that's the prerogative of the board to, to make those, those decisions. Um, but upon request to, to look at certain departments, uh, I, I did suggest reorganization, uh, of these departments. There was discussion on it. The board said that they wanted more time to consider these changes. Uh, Commissioner Hoffler said that, uh, I, I believe she, as the way she put it, she, she was a visual person, and she would like to, to, to see those organizations, um, on a chart. So, uh, what you, what you have, uh, before you this evening. I, I have no additional information to present. Um, you know, I, the, these are still, if you're looking at reorganization, uh, these, uh, are changes that, that I recommend. But even in that document as originally presented, you know, I reiterated my, uh, desire that it, it be a, a countywide, uh, review as opposed to a piecemeal, um, review, as I thought that that would be a little bit more, um, it would, it would expedite the process, uh, maybe be a little bit more, more beneficial. But I'd, I'd be glad to answer any, any questions you, you may have. Purely to your discretion, as I, as I've noted, uh, it is, uh, it, the right is reserved upon the board to organize and reorganize, uh, how the local government is organized and structured, um, as, as well as determining the positions and the number of positions of the local government. After that, it becomes the, uh, becomes a responsibility of the manager in, in terms of managing that organization and those personnel as decided by the board. So once again, this matter is before you for your consideration this evening.
All right. So I understand, uh, that we, Taskkey, were looking at these departments. Uh, have we had any complaints, uh, from citizens or whatever about these departments, uh, needing, needing more friendly customer service or not getting the services that we're providing for?
Uh, no, I, I have not received complaints, uh, in, in terms of the, the performance of, of the departments.
Okay. Um, the reason why I'm asking, uh, I personally have been working with the department since June of '21. Sold my house, I'm building a, a new house. I put a metal building up, and it's, the department is seamless, in my opinion. It's seamless. You go in, you get your permits, they help you fill them out if you're not sure what you're doing. They take you to the zoning department to hand the permits off. Um, I'm just, I'm just wondering what we're getting after reorganizing something that's seamless already. That, that's the questions I've, I've, I've got about it. Um, I know it's going to be a costing curve with it, um, which I asked about last meeting. I still hadn't got answers on that yet. Um, so no complaints. I've talked to contractors. They have absolutely no complaints. This is the best inspector they've ever worked for. Um, when you call, you get an answer. I don't care what time of day you call, you get an answer. Uh, you call for inspection, they're either there that afternoon or the next morning. So, uh, you know, I, I had a lot of other questions that hadn't been answered. Um, I sent to you in an email. Still would like for them to be answered. Uh, but as far as reorganization, do you, do you have a cost of what it would be to give that direct raise? How much money it would be?
Uh, it, it, it would not be a, a large raise, but, but there would be a slight increase in, in that salary.
So I'm, I'm looking for a definite, this is going to cost me $2,500 a year more, $5,000 a year more. Uh, that was in my questions that I had emailed to you, uh, on December 19th. So, uh, yeah. That's about all I have to say about it.
If you look in your packet, and the commissioners that have been commissioners, last year, not in your packet, last year in spring 2021, before we even hired a county manager, we were talking about looking at operational efficiencies and effectiveness. When Mr. Frank, when Mr. Tim Wilson was hired, one of the first things that this board talked about was looking at reorganization and effectiveness and technology and all of those things. During the retreat in your last week, uh, last month's packet, it was in there again. Look at reorganization, efficiencies, and effectiveness. So this was not a, not a, um, something that Mr. Wilson thought about right off the bat. And I'm trying to make sure that people understand, especially commissioners, when we have discussions and we give the county manager directives of to do, to look at something, that's what he does. Now, I want the county manager to speak to this reorganization as far as the two departments that he had, it's not the first time we've seen it, and explain to the citizens why he has this on the agenda for action, what it means going forward for this county as far as all of the departments we have, all the staffing issues we have, and how he envisioned this working. County Manager?
Um, like I said, uh, at the board retreat, you, you did talk about staffing. You know, one thing I saw that, that there were, you know, this county does have quite a few departments with very few people in those departments in a way to, to better streamline the management positions, the department head positions, which typically are higher, higher-paying positions. Uh, housing, all of the development functions, uh, and all the development ordinances under one department, in this case, a planning and development department, is a very common practice, uh, amongst, uh, smaller planning and development departments. It gives one person being that, that single director to, to make sure that there is that continuous flow, that there is that cooperation, uh, and that seamlessness in how applications are, are processed. Because, you know, it's no commentary, the reorganization is not a commentary on, on, on anybody's abilities here. That, that's, that's not what's at stake. But, but having all of the development, uh, services, be it the building code, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, under a single department's leadership is preferable. When you go to even larger localities, the same principle holds true. And actually, all of those development ordinances are further broken out into another department, which in many localities is, is referred to as development services. So in terms of a reorganization, you had two departments interrelated in terms of development ordinance procedures, and having them under a singular department, to me, made more organizational sense. And I have been, I have created, I've managed, and I've run planning and development and community development departments for 25 years of my 33-year career.
Will there be any loss of staff with this reorganization? I think that's what people are trying to get at.
No. None, none of this reorganization will reduce staff or result in, you know, any reduction of service, and, and it will not result in any reduction of staff.
Will there be relocation of staff? I heard something about relocation, about, what, the water plant?
With, with the, the planning and the, the building, uh, no, I, I don't see in any reorganization. Uh, with the other reorganization, the two employees, the technicians, the customer service technicians, and under, um, the customer service, that they, they would remain at their, at their present location. There wouldn't be any need to relocate. That, that, that space is fine. Uh, there, there, there could possibly be a relocation of the position, um, that now heads the customer service, uh, to, to be a, a billing administrator, uh, forming a lot of the same job functions, not all, but some of the primary, uh, within what I've reclassified, everyone refers to it as the water department, sometimes the utility department. In this scenario, I, I called it the utility department because it deals with both water and wastewater. So I thought utility was, was a more appropriate name. Uh, you know, I, I have not made any hard and fast decisions on the relocation of that, of that person's workspace. And as I put in the memorandum. person's workspace, and as I put in the memorandum here, I don't think that that change should go into final effect, because right now, we do have a vacancy in the director position for the utility department, and I would like that director to be part of that discussion, you know, with, with the existing staff.
How about reduction in salary? I heard you say no reduction in force, and how about, I didn't hear you mention salary?
No, I am not looking at a reduction of salary, because the, the building administrator, right now, that, that position manages one position as a, as a department. That individual will still have the same management responsibility of managing one person. So, there's not going to be any change in either that position's workload or the number of employees that that person manages. The only change is that, you know, as, as opposed to being a department head, they would no longer be a department head, there would be a, a new department head who would be the planning and development director under my proposal. So, I, you know, I, I don't see where that position is either A relieved of any management responsibilities that it presently has, or any work duties that it presently has. So, I would see no reason to, to reduce the salary that that person presently has.
All right, so what we're looking at is, sorry, flawless, seamless, we're going to make it one department, put a director over, and it's going to cost us more money to get the same service. This is what I'm looking at.
Well, in the planning and development department, I was looking at it, you have the planning and development director that would be over the two departments, I mean, what we currently have, the two departments.
Two departments.
The inspections and the zoning and coding. And no staff's going to be eliminated, there is going to be a tweak in the salary of the planning and director, but as some of these, like the building code administrator, or these people change all the time, there might, there would be a savings.
Yeah, and, and, and I agree, right, right now, the, the current people who hold those positions, you know, that they are working together well, but, you know, over time, people do, you know, they move on to, you know, other opportunities and so forth. And by having one director, you, you have better control to make sure that that seamless permitting process, and that's really what the, the primary purpose of this would be, would be get, would be to get all of the development code activities underneath one department, underneath the charge of one person, so that you may not have, you know, I don't want to call it, you know, dueling department heads about how certain processes should work, that that would be, you know, managed through a single director, and that's why many of these departments are organized that way.
But we're not having an issue now, right? Dueling department is?
Not, not that's been brought to my attention by, by the staff in, in either of those departments.
How about when budget time comes, and not really the dollar side, but in developing the budget, would you see any improvement there? You'd be working with a department head, whereas, right now, you'd be working with three different departments or two different departments?
It makes for a more streamlined management process, and like I said, you, you do get a savings over time across the board, because, you know, you have less higher, you know, department level positions, because as I said, over, over time, yes, we have a snapshot in time now of who are the people in the current departments, but, but that change, it changes in all organizations over time.
And our goal should be to retain, after we train folks and then have them as employee, don't we want to keep them, don't we want to retain them?
Yes.
Did I hear somewhere along, you wanted to move along, even if they, if they go elsewhere? Did I hear that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Did I hear that as, as they get into this department, then you kind of want them, or thinking about them moving along elsewhere?
Yes, I mean, I, I've had very good employees move, employees that I've had good relationships with, but as they want to advance their career, they, they understand that they hit certain ceilings or, you know, trying to advance their career, that, you know, certain opportunities may not be avail, available to them, especially in smaller departments, there's just limited opportunity for advancement, either in management responsibility, either that they're looking at managing a larger department, places that have higher salary ranges because they are larger departments, or in areas that can pay it. Yes, I've seen, I've had perfectly good employees that I've had perfectly good relationships with progress on to, that were just better opportunities to manage larger departments, learn more skills, take on more responsibilities, and yes, income is always a motivator as well, too.
But that's not the purpose of this, this purpose is to streamline it, and when I talk about people leaving, I, you know, time is going to take us all like.
So. You should. All right, one last question, and I'll move on from this. So, we know what's happened recently, and I, you now want, do you see this causing any effect in employees leaving and causing disservice to the county? Somebody quitting because they get moved? That's something we got to keep on our forefront now.
I, I can't speak for, you know, that, you know, whether somebody moves and, you know, whether immediately or over time, that, you know, this isn't it, but, you know, I, I have, you know, I've got to walk the tightrope of trying to look out for what's in the best interest of the employees, but also look out for what's in the best interest of this county organization.
And I still would like to have my questions answered whenever you get a chance.
Any more discussion? Any more questions? This was on the agenda for, or is it? Back to my agenda. Okay, what is, okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
So, what I'm hearing from tonight, the only one we would be considered, if we consider doing anything, is planning and the development, because you want to wait before hiring a new person in the water department or supervisor, that that would be put on the back burner?
That, but partially correct, I mean, the, these were the two that, that were looked at, but I believe if you're looking at the, the reorganization, you know, to, anything involving a reorganization of a department that presently doesn't have a director would, you know, probably not be an optimum situation. You could act on, what I've recommended here, should you be so inclined to improve it, is that you could approve it with a future effective date, and that effective date would be at such time that a director is, is hired and, and commences work in the utility department for sometime, you know, 30 days afterwards, if you want to give them a little time to get on their feet. So, you, you could take action on both, but if you do, I'm requesting that you delay the implementation of, of the one involving the, the utility, finance, and customer service. Another note, and it's, it's probably the primary one that I have with the reorganization of the customer service, is that I do believe that, you know, two of the employees in that department, their, their primary function is the intake of, of money, monies owed to the county, and I do believe that those employees should be underneath the supervision and the policies of the, the finance officer. You know, I'm cognizant of the fact that we have other departments that do take in money, that taking in of money is incidental to their primary responsibilities. We'll use the planning department as, as an example, you know, they, they may take in fees, but taking in fees and taking money is not their primary responsibility, administration and enforcement of code is. And so, I, I do subscribe to, to the school of thought that if, if the finance officer is to be accountable for, for the monies of this county, then they should have managerial control of people who have primary responsibilities handling that money.
So, how does that work with our tax department?
The tax department is a totally separate department established by statute, and that and then the tax collector is appointed by this governing body.
Yeah, but the tax funds comes to us, and that's what we have our funds to operate on, correct?
It's, it's a, it's a separate entity from that of, of the normal county departments as set forth in the statute.
Assuming it's the same way with the registered Ds?
Yeah, constitutional officers is how I refer to them, or appointed officers, and the tax collector is an appointed officer, you know, he's, you know, he, he does not report to me, he is not underneath my supervision, actually, he reports to you directly as, as the governing body. So, you know, that, that's a whole different structure that you're dealing with as part of the local government.
State statute and auditor controls and things like that will require us, those things to be separated, which they've spoken to us in the past, you know, getting more personnel in the finance department, we need another person in there too, so I recall those separations and that.
Yeah.
I would think, in our, talking about the increase in salary, I don't know what the step would be, and I know Ms. Allen's not here, but do you think the step or the grade for the current position of that person would be two steps? I mean, I won't hold you to that, but.
Probably no more than two steps, I mean, because it's, you know, she's looking, you know, because she's already, she already does have code administration and enforcement responsibilities, so it's, it's, it's a function that she already performs, and she would not be doing those directly. As the, the director of that department, she, she could not require the building administrator to, to change a decision. She, she would supervise his work activities, habits, and so forth, but when it comes to the code, his code under the decision, she cannot interfere with, a building code of appeals, just as with a zoning administrator. You know, she is a zoning administrator, but if you had a separate one, you know, she, she could not dictate that that code official take an action underneath the code that, that they did not agree with. In fact, North Carolina is actually fairly strict about interfering with the actions of, or in, unduly influencing a building administrator. And as far as the building inspector, same holds true, she could not directly instruct the building inspector to make a decision or change a decision that the building inspector felt was incorrect, that building inspector is still going to be, you know.
He loses no authority.
Yeah, he, he, his position in this changes in, in no way, he still reports directly to the, the, the building code administrator. So, so she, she's going to be asked, or the, the department of this department is going to be asked to, to, to supervise and bring into the fold underneath one department all development ordinances, and if there ever is a discrepancy, you do have a singular department head who can resolve that.
So, what I'm kind of hearing, just making an individual a department head, no need to give them a raise if they don't have any authority of those people, right?
No, no, because she, she still is, while she, she cannot change his decisions over the code, she still has, still has to manage that person as, an employee, as that, as far as them meeting the requirements of our personnel policy, and making sure that that person is executing their responsibilities as set forth in their job description. So, there, so there is, there's additional supervisory capacity that, that comes in with the supervising of, of the additional person, but I was just trying to make the distinction that with that, she, she would not have the ability to overturn his decisions as made under the building code. That hers, that, basically, her, her supervision does not extend that far.
And how many does she supervise now? One?
Two.
And of course, she has the Board of Adjustments and Planning Board to lead the.
Well, that doesn't change, she already has that, right?
Right. Any other?
I think I might have one more question. Would, would it be relieving the building inspector? What would he be relieving, not relinquishing, but what, is there anything that it would relieve him of that could be significant or?
Basically, and instead of being underneath reporting to me as his immediate supervisor, he would be reporting to Ms. Cherry as his immediate supervisor. So, so he, he's still going to be a supervised employee, he is relieved of some minor responsibilities as, you know, that are applied to department heads, but, but he's still going to be a supervised employee, it's just going to be from a department head level as opposed to a county manager, but, but ultimately, all final decisions, should there be any disputes, appeals, so forth, do go to the top, the chief administrative official, which is me, the county manager.
Mr. Craddock?
No, I was just going to go ahead and make a motion whenever you're ready.
Are there any further discussion? No more question? All right. What is the pleasure of the board? I need a motion from one of you or two of you.
Madam Chairman, as far, as far as reorganization of select departments and staff, I recommend, or make a motion that we do not accept, that's my motion.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Any further discuss?
Yes, ma'am. Discussion on the point, it seems like that maybe the, the one factor that we don't have is the cost, is, is the cost increase, and, and I wish we did have that, you know, to help us, because that might help us make a more concrete decision, whichever way we go, but we don't have that, so, anyway, I'm just making that coming.
Hearing, I have a motion and a second on the floor, I'll be ready to vote. Board, could you have the motion?
Yes.
Read the motion.
Craddock made a motion, do not accept reorganization.
Okay, we had a second by Mr. Freeman.
And, and you're talking about all the, for the planning and the?
Talking the whole thing.
Finance and, and public utilities, all three, correct?
Correct.
Entirety.
Entirety.
That's the one, the entirety, okay.
Okay, ready to vote? No more discussion? All right, no more question? All in favor of the motion to not approve?
To not accept.
Do not accept.
Reorganization to this entirety, that includes both departments.
You repeat that? Both departments, I move. I move that we do not reorganize select county department staff in both departments. Is my motion.
All right, ready to vote? No more adding? Everybody understand? All in favor of the motion as put into, on the floor? Raise your hand. Public hearing was closed on this item last October, actually requested, with the pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, we've, you know, we don't get to hear from all the citizens tonight because they're not on here, but we did hear from some that think that we need to reconsider. I, for one, think maybe we need to revisit. Let me read something that I shared with one of the commissioners when we got here today. I did get a call this, I did get a call this week regarding the land purchase, and it was a person who was not in favor. And I was asked about, and we heard this at the podium tonight, about the $1.4 million and how to spend it, what's the best thing to do with it, and I'm not sure everybody knows, but there is an additional $800,000 that is coming as well. The reason none of that money has been spent is because there's something called the final rule, and I met with Ms. Outland last week, and Ms. Outland and I had a conference call with finance, some finance division in Raleigh. It was a conference call, and we were asking some specific questions about the ARP dollars. And in her, she's not here tonight, and I don't think she's going to go into great detail about this, but I shared it with someone last night. I want to share it with everybody who's here and everybody who's listening. This final rule, and I want to read it right out of her, right out of her document here. Oh, it says here that in January of 2022, where we sit right now, the final rule, which comes from the federal government about how you can spend these dollars, okay? The final rule has been passed. However, there's a Treasury, she's telling the board here, that there's a Treasury webinar that she has to participate in, also in January of this year, 2022, for updates on the final rule. So basically, what that's saying is, the government has passed the final rule, they know what it is, now they're going to reach out to all the finance officers across the country, not just North Carolina, and say, here's where you can apply that money. Okay? Basically, that money is treated like a grant. That $1.4 million, you can't just start stroking a check. You have to give a reasonable, almost what you would call a grant, treating it like a grant, and you have to say, well, this is where we want to spend $250,000 of it. So you write, the county writes up this grant, and we submit it to the final rule, and they say, that's a good decision, that's where money can be spent, it's a valid situation. So we're able then to spend that $250,000 specifically on that project. This opportunity will not come around again. You know, this is all about COVID, you know? We hope this does not come around again. We do need to spend this money wisely. We need to invest in our infrastructure. We need to invest in ourself as well. Now, one of the things that Ms. Outland and I talked to, to this finance director, was about ongoing sales tax dollars, and do they see that rule changing? There's a very complex calculated formula that says what revenue, sales tax, we get. And what a lot of people don't know is that when someone spends a sales tax dollar in Charlotte and in Raleigh and Mecklenburg County, Chatham County, Clay County, wherever, Gates County gets a portion of that dollar. Even though a person didn't spend a penny in Gates County when they bought a loaf of bread in Raleigh, we get a portion of that dollar here because of the tier county and the population and the income and all the factors that work in. We get a portion of that dollar. I had Ms. Outland to call to make sure that anything new built in the county, Commerce Park or wherever, would not change that formula. That was my reason for calling, because we didn't want to jeopardize that formula. And we were assured that there is a threshold, and it's a complicated formula. The lady could not give us what our threshold was, but she said, you're a long ways, Gates County, from that threshold, so no issues there. I do want the public to know that, you know, there are two businesses out there, State Employees Credit Union and the nursing home, and this is not sales tax. I was not able to get those numbers for you, but in property taxes, those two businesses alone pay $37,000 in property taxes out there. Thirty-seven thousand dollars in property taxes, just those two businesses. I can tell you that during COVID, these are some of the things that go into my decision making. And my decision-making, a lot of you don't know this, I'm giving you facts that I want you to not just blow off, but really listen to. These are facts. When COVID came and we were working on our budget, we were concerned about what is COVID going to do to Gates County. Now, if you remember this, not, but I told you, it's not going to affect us like other places, because our people are going to stay home. Everybody's staying home. Well, before COVID, what were we doing? Me included, was getting in my car, and I was going across that state line, and I was buying some things. Okay? And we're all guilty of that, we know we are, and because we stayed home and shopped at Dollar General, that was the big difference. Because we stayed home and stopped at Dollar General, we had the best tax, sales tax history Gates County has ever had. And I don't mean by 5,000, 10,000. I don't mean by $50,000. It was a huge number, and I don't want to guess at it, but I can tell you, it was a huge number. So what does that tell me? The things that are outside the county, if they were in the county, that would be the scenario all the time. That would be the scenario all the time. If we have, you know, if we have a, we don't have an optometrist here, eye doctor, anything like that, but suppose, excuse me, suppose somebody in Suffolk or somebody in Elizabeth City said, you know, there are 11,600 people in Gates County, and I've already got 400 of them coming over to me to see me. Maybe I need to put a satellite office over there, just two employees over there, but I could pick up, instead of 250 from Gates County, I could pick up 950 customers from Gates County. Because, see, right now, the pie is split. Some are going to Elizabeth City, some are going to Ahoski, some are going to Suffolk, some are going to Franklin, some are going to Chesapeake. If we stop splitting up that pie and start working together here in the county, all of those revenue dollars come back to the county. So these are just facts that I want to share with you, and the county manager, one of the numbers I think he's going to give me, this is from the finance department, and it says that the projections for this year, actual collected or to exceed our budget, we budgeted a number of what we thought the sales tax would be, and I will tell you that we went ultra-conservative in that number, by almost a million dollars in sales tax, because we did not want to get caught in a deficit situation or a budget. We're projected to exceed it by $188,226 because you're shopping at home. Okay? Madam Chair, all those things that I said were factual. All the things I said sounds like a promotion of let's purchase this land. But instead of doing that, I'm going to say we need a little more homework done. I'm going to say we need a little more homework done. Again, we don't get to hear all the people. I can tell you, there are some people who are excited about the possibility of some new things coming to the county. There are some people that might be excited about a Bojangles going across the street or something like that. We have no control over what was to take place out there. Owning that property would give us some control, and we could protect our sewer by doing that. But I believe we have a little bit more homework to do. So even though I am in favor of it, I'm not in favor of making a decision yea or nay tonight. And that's all I have to say unless I ask a question.
We, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to call him. I'm sorry. Commissioner Freeman.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, yes, thank you. We have talked about this, and we've had public hearings on it, and I've heard from the citizens, and that's who I represent. I represent you. We may be sitting here as a governing body. I hear we are. I know we are. And I have heard before, we don't have to read the citizens' emails, we don't have to pay attention to that. I do. I'm going to read every, and I've said that in our meetings. I read every email that I get from our citizens. So far, I have not gotten a one that was in favor of the $600,000 purchase of the land, not a one, and I printed them out. And also, I meet people on the street and talk with them, not a one is in favor, and I've told them our version, as close as I could, of what the vision is, and of course, they've listened to what was presented here in the public hearing, and they still haven't accepted. In your assistance, we represent you, I represent you. So you know what I'm saying. Stand with you.
Commissioner Craddock?
So pulling off of him, I'm about 60-40 of what I've heard, 60 against it, 40 for it, but some of the 60 have said, we want to see a plan. We want to see what the development plan is. Show us a picture. Let's see it. Let's see it, you know? And this, and I, we're visual people, and so are our citizens. And if we're going to spend this kind of money on a good thing, economic development, bring funds into the county, let's show them a plan. So I think we do have some more homework to do.
Yes, but I've had, I've had people that are very much for it, that were excited to it. I've had people who are not excited about it. I just think that one of the things we have to, if we do it the same old way, we get the same old results. We need to try to encourage people to come into this county to invest, but I do, it's fine with me to do more studying or to have a plan. I don't know what else we can say, but we can certainly take a dull look at it.
It all says fail the plan, plan to fail.
Any more comments before I make my comment? This is, everyone has a position. I'm a commissioner as well. I have one voted like everyone else. If not that piece of property, then what's the alternative? For a piece of property or properties that we can use to attract businesses, entities here, so we can expand the sales tax base of this county? 10 years ago, in 2011, you had a strategic plan, I think it was called Green Gates, something like that. Here we sit in 2022, and nothing was done with that plan. We don't know what the future holds, but we do know this. We don't have businesses coming here to help us really expand the sales tax base of this county. We're very pleased with all the entrepreneurs. I watch Facebook and all of the entrepreneurs that have started small businesses in the county, and they're doing quite well. The money you're talking about, the ARC money, if the final rule did come in last Friday, I stay on top of that, as well as the state budget that was approved and all the other grant money. All of that money has to be tied to a project. Now, the ARC money, we can use that in certain ways. They made it more flexible with that final rule. Somebody said, but what did we spend? We haven't spent the money. It's in the account. We couldn't spend the money. So the money is 1.4 in the bank and another over 800,000 coming later on in the spring or late spring. But the money's going to stay there if we don't get projects to tie the money to. You just don't write a check and say, I want money for this, 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 and that's okay. My position is this, if Gates County does not want to invest in the future and expand the sales tax base, then that's okay. I too, like Ms. Harper, I've had people that, on both sides of the fence, you know, they don't want it, and I was hearing about what happened, what, 10 years ago or 20 years, whatever it was. That was 20 years ago. There's not a piece of land on God's green earth that won't per. Many of you go down to the beach. You know, you do. You go down to the beach, and you stay in cottages on sandbar. Technology has changed, and I'm not going to promote or demote what is, because I can't predict the future, but I do know this. The sales tax base of this county has got to grow or change in order for us to keep paying the bills. You want services? We want to give you those services, the excellent services. No one asks about, I want to use an example. Most people complain about the water department or the lack of water, broken leaks, whatever it is. Nobody ever asks how much it costs to treat that water. Nobody ever asks that, and we're paying $12 for 1,000 gallons of treated water. It's just not water, it's treated. No one has asked. There's a lot of analysis need to be done in this county that has not been done in years, but we still want to provide public safety, we're going to do that. Public health, we're going to do that. The cost is going up. So if this is what the county wants and desires, so be it. But when the sales tax base doesn't expand, and you know what that means, what are we going to do? And we're going to do what we can and what we have. Right now, the county doesn't have, own any land that's enough acreage to do anything with. That's 145 acres. We don't own 145 acres anywhere else. And let me close with this. When I talk to people, they want me to say, why don't y'all go on 13? I haven't seen a land on 13, so, but why don't you go on 32? Haven't seen that either. So I'm putting it out to the citizens. If not this, then what? You have to have an alternative, because if you do not have an alternative, then we're not going to be doing anything. We cannot write for grants for economic activity without something to show, without land to show. And a plan? Yes, we can do a plan, but where and for what? So if this is the say of the citizens of this county, that we are satisfied keeping what we have and watching the sales tax stay flat, that's okay, because, like you said, we don't listen. But we listen. You're going to see later on in the agenda, because we got to move on, but you're going to see, we listen to you. Just take us time to work.
Madam Chair, if I may, because I said I was stating facts, and one more fact just came to mind, and because I want to help you make a decision, okay? Because if you've, some of the things I've told you, I hope it's, I mean, if you're dead against it, I hope that some of the things that I've said, said, well, when you say, hey, I didn't know that, that maybe you'll take that in consideration, and don't be closed on it, okay? And it may not change your mind, but the other fact that... But the, the other fact that, and, and we checked on this last week, is there is one acre for sale beside State Employees Credit Union. It's in the hands of a realtor and it's listed for one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Okay, so take that in consideration. Suppose that piece of property sells, and, and right now, we have no control over, well, we'll never have any control over that one piece of property. So they could sell that property and something could be, could be put there that wouldn't make the commercial district that we had hoped it would be look, look good. But if it does sell for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, if it closes for that, what does that make every acre or every good acre? I'll, I'll concede, there's some acreage out there that's not good, but for every good acre, what does that make that price? I would say the going price would be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per acre. So I'll just give you, that, that's a fact, we'll, we'll, I guess we'll have to wait and see what it sells for.
Yeah, we're going to have to wait and see what happens in Gates County, but, and as we wait, I, I encourage you to look at the other counties around us. I know you want to say we're not like other counties, but the other counties have projects they tied to five years ago, and they're getting millions in appropriations. We can't get millions in appropriations because we have no project. Look at Pasquetank, Chilwell, Pecquemun, Northampton, Bertie, those are counties that just got appropriation for millions of dollars tied to land that they own, they bought the land for over six hundred thousand dollars. I think Pasquetank bought fifty-one acres for six hundred thousand dollars, Northampton bought ten acres for six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And they tied it to projects and they got appropriated funds that they don't have to pay back. And when they got their appropriation, they can take their appropriation and reimburse themselves, or get grants to reimburse themselves. So we can work with what we have, and what we have right now is what we have. So what's the pleasure of the board, so we can move on? I need, I need a...
You need a motion, Madam Chair?
I need a motion.
Uh, I make a motion that we, um, do our homework and that we, um, we bring this back to the board for a decision in March meeting.
Is that the motion?
My motion is to do, do some more homework, do some more fact finding, try to do, try to predict some cost and bring this back for, uh, a decision in the month of March.
Can I ask a question of you?
I think the county manager might have a comment that might change everything I just said.
No, I, no, I, I don't want to try to persuade the board one way or the other, and this might be a better, uh, question to be answered by, by the county attorney, but, you know, before you, you have a contract, um, for a purchase. I know you would like to study further, but I don't know that there is anything binding upon Mr. Carey, um, should he elect, since you have declined his contract, to, to move ahead and go to move on to another seller? And would, would that be, would that be correct?
Yes, it would be, I mean, he...
So the pre-negotiated...
You could lose, you could lose opportunity.
Commissioner Freeman, did, who's you want to...
No, I was just...
Ms. Hoffel?
Um, well, I was going to say, I was going to mention the contract that we have in front of us, but also this final rule, that money is in a pot, everybody's going to be lining up for it, and if we'll Johnny come lately, you know what happens to Johnny come lately, the door is slammed in their face.
Finally, again, if the citizens of this county that's sitting in front of us and have contacted us, not everybody has contacted, they have eleven, let's say minus children, probably nine thousand people, I don't know. But anyway, if this is, if this is the direction you want this commissioner, this commission board, the governing board to go with all the information that we have thus far, knowing that there's grant money that we never going to get again, oh, well, that's fine. We will do our homework again and see what we can come up with, we'll start working diligently to see what we can come up with, so that we can continue to provide the services at the level and the cost in the future. Nobody knows the future, I don't, nobody around this table. And it's, it's so much information out there and misinformation out there, and we're just trying to dig through it and make sure we make the best decision we can with facts, with facts. Board Clerk, we had, I think we had a motion on the floor, Commissioner...
Do our homework, bring back to the board for a decision in March meeting.
Is that the motion?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
May I, Madam Chairman, may I add in there that we table this until March the second? You want to include that language in that motion?
What, you, you said March second?
Oh, March, March meeting.
You said the March, the March meeting?
If you table something, it takes a motion to bring it back to the table.
Okay, that would still be okay, yeah.
I would prefer to do it in February because, like I said, once the money's gone, it's gone. And, like, and that's two months, and we, you know, everybody, I saw along a number of boards, people are lining up for the money. I hate for us to miss out.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, we, I don't have a second to my motion. So I withdraw my motion. And I'll, I'll make this, uh, this motion. That we not make a decision, make a motion, we do not make a decision on this tonight, that we continue to do research, that we try to develop, um, some cost projections. Planning wise, it, it would be hard to, to project, but, um, but I'll use Commissioner Freeman's verbiage of table the matter to the month of February.
And, and would you consider adding in there an additional presentation to show those facts in order to in that?
Well, I wouldn't want to make that in a motion if we weren't able to, uh, I put it in my, I'll include in my motion to, um, provide what we've established at, up to that point, sure.
Because, only for discussion purposes, we, we gave a presentation, but I don't know, or what I'm hearing is that not many, if any, understood the presentation.
I don't know that we gave a presentation at all, I thought it was just comments.
It may have been just comments, but that, that, that was not understood by the, uh, by the citizens.
Can I, may I restate my motion?
Yes, you may.
I think it, I think it might be good. I make a motion that we table, uh, the discussion or decision on the land purchase till the month of February.
I second it.
Madam Clerk, will you read it? My, my, will you read back the motion, please, so we know what we are voting on?
Table the decision?
To purchase, on the purchase of the land till February?
Till February.
Table the decision with purchase of land to the month of February?
Regular, regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
I agree that that's my motion.
We have a, we have a second by Commissioner Crater. All right, you've heard the motion read, everybody understand what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Advanced cash payment of utility bills. Ms. Outland's not here, but in our packets, commissioners, I, uh, let you know that it's in the packet, I know you've read it. This is, um, the, the cash payment that we were talking about having for the citizens, they wanted a cash, uh, advanced cash payment on the utility bill. And Ms. Outland, she sent an email with, uh, she's worked on the policy, she has, um, spoken with the bank, she has, uh, it said the bank drafts offer customers the option of having their bank account drafted on a set date of the month. That's the bank draft, let me get to the advance, advance payment. The finance department contacted town of Ahansky, Chilwell County, Northampton County, Pitt County, as well as to view the customer service policies for city, Mr. City, Bothell County and Chilwell County in regards to bank draft and advanced payments. The following has been put into place to ensure correct posting. Contacted Edmonds support team for both the billing collection module and finance module. Passed through account created for credit balances to post automatically to the general ledger. Further discussion with Edmonds as well as customer service department on new routines that may need to be run monthly to ensure activity post currently. Points of discussion, refund policy, current language engaged county customer service policy only states refunds to be sent to customers with inactive balances that will not transferred to an active account, does not discuss if there is a minimum dollar amount to be refunded. If advanced payments will need to be refunded for active accounts, will the refunded amount be a full refund or up to a capped amount? Refunds are currently sent to the board for approval if it's over a hundred dollars. She could not find this in a policy anywhere and do not have the history of when this started. Is this a practice of the board we'd like to continue, or is this a function that can be assigned off by administration? The finance department and customer service department will work closely together over the next few months to ensure all new processes and procedures are implemented successfully. So we're working on advanced, um, payments, okay? That was something that we had to stop because of, uh, issues we had, we didn't have a policy, we didn't have an account, we didn't have all of these things that we should have had in place. And we charged the county manager and his staff to work on this, to bring this to fruition. We don't need a, uh, a motion, I mean, approval tonight, we just need to look at this, but bring it back, and Ms. Old, I mean, Ms. Outland is here so that we can, uh, get the policies in our hands that she's worked on, the processes that she's worked on, all of the things that's been worked on for these advanced, uh, uh, payments. County Manager, did I sum it up, or is there anything else to add?
No.
Okay. So it's the pleasure of the board for us to continue to look at this and work with Ms. Outland, her staff, um, to continue with this, to get the advanced cash payment of utility bills, water bills.
Madam Chair, sometimes we have a history of beating a dead horse.
Yes, we do.
When Ms. Outland comes, I expect us to make a decision and put this to bed, do what's best for our citizens and these advanced payments, and move on.
Because we don't have the, we don't have, she's working on, see, it's not just doing it, you have to have policy to undergird it, that was one of the issues before, we didn't have the policies, and we got kind of a, ahead of ourselves for years. And we have to have the policy to do the refunds, to do the deposits, to do X, Y, A, B, C.
Because the auditors got to see the policy.
And I think, weren't we told we couldn't do that?
At one time, we were told we could not do it, and now we're making it, we're trying to make it happen. So now we're working on it, Commissioner Crater.
Okay.
So as soon as she gets back, she'll start working on it, she should have it, I spoke to her about it, and she was working on the policies that undergirds everything we're doing. And then she'll work with the water department as far as the processes to get that done.
Can we expect to have it on the agenda next month?
We expect to have it on the agenda next month. Um, I think she's far enough along, when I spoke with her last week, that she's trying to, you know, make sure, but this is for our, uh, information and to ask questions as she works on the policies and the procedures that's needed to make advanced cash payment of utility bills a reality. County Manager, I don't see on the agenda before I ask for a vote or action about the bank draft, you don't, she's not here, but I see it in this packet, this email that she sent.
It's continuing to be worked on, it's near its final stages of completion.
All right, the bank draft or automatic pay is also in the final pay, uh, process of being finalized, so we could put the two together, auto pay and advanced payment?
Does...
Is that, go ahead, no?
If you wish, I think you can put that one to rest tonight. I, I, I think the board understands what, what auto draft is, uh, and what it is. I instructed Kim to, to look in to that issue, to, to make that another means by which people could pay, and that way you can kind of keep your money in your bank, and the only thing that will be withdrawn, you don't have to worry about anything, whatever it's owed, it will be withdrawn. Actually, because of the volume of business that we do with the bank, some of the other methods that we have online, there is a, a cost, Kim has explained to me, because of our business relationship with the bank, there would be no additional cost, uh, for customers who wish to use auto draft, uh, for that. And so if, if the board has no objections, uh, to making auto draft another option available to the water customers, a vote that evening, this evening would be good to, to finalize that, and then, uh, Ms. Allen, she, she can continue with it and implement it as soon as possible.
Keep it simple, keep it simple, yeah.
That, and like I say, it's no cost to...
Yeah, she advised me, like a lot of the online options do have a cost, the bank has told her there is, there is no fee or cost for using...
So I just want the public to know, if you do automatic draft, there's no cost to you, if you, your water bill's twenty-five dollars, that's the only, it's twenty-five dollars will be deducted.
Correct.
With no fees.
Madam Chair, in, in light of County Manager's comments on the auto draft, I make a motion that we adopt the auto draft, um, as soon as possible in, uh, to get that ready for our citizens.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, I think we all second it.
Second move.
Ms. Chestnut, you have that motion to go ahead and approve the...
Auto draft as soon as possible.
The auto draft, I have a memo here, um, that stated from Kim that if it's approved tonight, let's see.
It's very, it's very close, yes.
Information will be placed on the water bill in the future, current information about bi-monthly buildings on the bill, first draft scheduled on March sixteenth, uh, it's twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two water bill due date to work out any final setup and process needs. Customers can begin to turn in the authorization form. She's going to put an authorization form on the website that, that people can go in and sign up for auto draft, and she'll, they'll be collecting those, and they can go from there, so watch the website in the next couple of days, probably, she'll get it up there.
And, and, and people can stop by the offices and pick...
And you can stop by the office and pick up the form if you want to do auto draft, okay? So that's going to be right now. So let's, let's have that motion first for auto draft. That was Commissioner...
Ms. Hoffel's supping?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, auto draft is immediate, you can pick the form up at the, uh, downstairs, or you can go to the website and fill the form out and get ready for auto draft, okay? The advanced payment, we said we're going to table that, I think we finally got that right. Finally got that right as far as, uh, for the next month, we're going to wrap this up? Okay. The PSAP backup is next, agreement? I think Mr. Wilson spoke to that briefly, so again, will he go over that?
Yeah, uh, currently, our, our backup PSAP is actually located at the EOC here in Gates County, which is, you know, not, not a great distance, um, from our, our primary PSAP, and also not in, I guess what you would call one of the most, uh, one of the buildings with a lot of structural integrity to it, so, you know, we were looking at trying to find a, a safer location or a more adequate location for the backup of, of the PSAP, so that there was a major... So that if there was a major event that, that came through, through the county, that since these two are, that we have currently at such close proximity, you know, have the potential of taking both out. And so we, we have worked out this agreement, uh, with Perquimmons County. I think, you know, if there's, you know, a silver lining that, that there is with the current situation that we have with Perquimmons, it, it's shown that, you know, we, we can work very well together with them. And this, this document, if approved, uh, would, would be the official agreement, uh, between Gates and, and Perquimmons County, and where they, they would, uh, provide, you know, readily accessible and usable space at their PSAP, uh, for, for backup use by Gates County in the event of emergency. And, and like I said, once again, the, in terms of costs, you know, that will be, I guess, you know, as, as I understand it, what would be the cost of, I guess they're looking at if, if we had such a catastrophe that, you know, they actually even had to provide the dispatcher. So that's why it's going to set up that, it's, you know, the cost of a 24-hour, you know, shift worth of a dispatcher. Plus, and, and talking with the manager, you know, there, there are a few incidental expenses, just having additional people there, you know, running the operation, but I, I expect those to be small. Um, like I said, I think this is a, a far preferable location, a far safer location for our backup, and we have now a, a demonstrated, uh, relationship that, that we can work well with Perquimmons in an emergency situation.
Is it a reciprocal agreement?
No, I believe, uh, Perquimmons, I believe, actually, they, um, I believe they actually use, um, Chawan County.
Okay. All right. So what we're talking about is a bad storm comes through, and because, um, we could be hit, both locations could be hit, and we could be down. This is the what-if, Commissioner Freeman?
Well, we, we, we wouldn't really maintain the, the backup PSAP that we have now. This would be changing the, the location of our backup PSAP, which is at the EOC. Our primary is located over in the, the courts building, the sheriff's office, uh, location. Um, if something should happen to that primary, our backup right now is in that manufactured structure at the EOC, which, you know...
Could be subject to...
Close proximity, not a sturdy structure, probably not, not the best location for the backup PSAP. Perquimmons, you know, if it was a localized event, you know, we have more chance that, you know, of not having both our primary and backup taken out in an event, as they are in close proximity right now. So I think the distance is helpful. It's, it's in a, a, you know, a more, a building with better structural integrity in, in the event of a storm, um, and the fact that, you know, we have, you know, experienced a good relationship in working with Perquimmons.
Well, as, as to the cost, and this wouldn't be anything guaranteed, but as to speak to the cost, um, if it was, uh, declared a state emergency, uh, we could probably get some reimbursement, probably from FEMA to help with that.
Yeah, yes. Documenting, you know, hours, um, travel costs, those, those types of things. I've, I've talked to the, uh, one of the things I, I talked to Mr. Sample early was to, because one of the things I want to make sure that all of our county employees have, um, is, is the, the NIMs training. I'm sure Commissioner Freeman knows what I'm talking about, because in order for personnel costs to be reimbursed, they have to have successfully completed certain minimum NIMs courses. And so that's something Mr. Sample is going to make sure is taken care of. So we will be eligible for that FEMA money.
Well, I know that Sheriff went to Perquimmons County this week and made a personal visit over there and gave them a thank you for, um, helping us out. And, and I appreciate him going over there and doing that face to face. So, uh, we do have a good relationship there. This takes care of the what-if. We hope we never have to have it.
Amen.
If we, if we, for any reason, and I don't anticipate any, but anytime you have an agreement, you always want to know what the rules are about, uh, dissolving the agreement. It just...
And it's in here.
It's in there?
And Jack, in addition, in addition to that, uh, uh, relationship, if you will, uh, that weekend, Frank Heath, the county manager, uh, called me, and I spoke with him, uh, and thanked him and his, uh, head dispatcher, I guess that's what you call him, Jonathan Nixon. And then subsequently, on Sunday, the chairman of their board called me and said, "What in the heck is going on?" And, uh, and we had a long conversation, Wallace Nelson. And, uh, uh, so things began to understand and be in a resolving nature. So there's a little, uh, the county manager, Frank Heath, was, was questioning.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I believe this is proper action for us to enter into. I'll make the motion that we adopt, uh, this, uh, PSAP backup plan tonight.
I second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor in a second to accept the PSAP backup plan for Perquimmons. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving right along, the next is to propose rescinding of Gates County Personnel Ordinance. Public hearing closed on this item last November. This is a, this is an ordinance that we've had on the books since 2000, whatever, I can't remember now. And we've had a personnel policy that's next that we've had since 2017. Um, so we need to rescind?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, Madam Chair, if I may, you know, I, I would just like to advise the board that, you know, I, I see these two items as very much interconnected. You, you would not want to take an action to rescind your personnel ordinance unless you are prepared to adopt the personnel policy, or at least major portions of that personnel policy. Because if you rescind and adopt nothing, you're, you're left with no personnel policy. So I just want to make the board aware of that, that, you know, these are, these are interconnected issues here.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
County manager, um, as far as effective date, if we were to rescind personnel policy and adopt, uh, I mean, personnel ordinance, adopt the policy, will we be using an effective date of tonight?
You, you could make it tonight. You, you could make it whatever effective date you see, you see proper in the future.
Okay.
Uh, and, and, and in the current policy, what I did, I, I went through, because it, you know, it is a number of years old, the, the personnel policy that was prepared by the MAPS group. And, and, and that company did recommend, as most localities will, uh, you know, to move from a, an ordinance to a policy, because a, a policy provides you more flexibility. And that, that's just not for the benefit of the board or management. It's also can be very much for the, for the, uh, the benefit of the employees. I, I did go through that policy. I used that, um, to review it. I tried to make it a little bit more concise. Where, where I found that the policy that was being recommended took away certain things, no matter, you know, where I could identify, you know, large or small, I, I made those modifications, because I, I did not want to move from one to the other to result in some type of loss to the employee. Uh, one, one example of that, employees, most employees, they're allowed to, uh, you can accumulate up to a maximum of 230 hours, um, of vacation leave a year. And if at the end of the year, you have over 230 in vacation, you don't absolutely lose it. But say you have 250, 20 of those hours is going to be converted into sick leave. So, you know, that in itself is a little bit generous, because it just, some, some just say, "It's gone. You've lost it." What was in the policy from, um, from the MAPS group was that regardless of when an employee left the employment of the county, the maximum that they would be paid out would be that 230, that 230 hours. Right now, I'll use the same example, if, say, an employee is earning eight hours a month, um, they had 230 right at the end of December. If they left at the end of, of March, well, they would have 254 hours on the boats, and they would be paid out that 254. What the MAPS group had was, nope, you would just get 230. I cut that out, uh, you know, because I, whatever you had earned, then I know, like I said, I, I didn't want it to be viewed as something, and I did have an eye that, you know, I, I did not want the employees to, to lose any benefit or something that they had earned through that.
If you've earned it, you've earned it.
Yeah. So, but, but I did, as, as before, I do, you know, recommend that, that a policy is, you know, it does provide more flexibility, as we discussed before, as in ordinance, there, there is no deviation from it. It's an ordinance, just like any other ordinance. It's a law. And, and to change it, you have to go through public hearing processes, you know? It's very much more cumbersome to administer, and it doesn't really provide you any elasticity. Um, a, another example, uh, when we were talking with Perquimmons about the hiring of dispatchers, they said, "Have you thought about the potential bonuses, you know, as an incentive?" I said, "I wouldn't be able to do that, because I'm operating under a personnel ordinance." And if that ordinance doesn't specifically state bonuses, you know, can be used, I, you know, the county could not offer it.
You'd have to have a hearing.
Where, where with a policy, you know, you can, you can be, you can be more responsive and more reactive to, to do things. So that, that's why the vast majority of counties operate under policies as opposed to ordinances. And, and the only section that I, I, I was not able to complete, because it is a tricky section, and there is state law that's involved with it, is the grievance and appeal, uh, procedure. I, I, I think what they had in there was rather cumbersome. Uh, but, but right now, we, we do not have any pending appeals. We don't have any disciplinary actions that are ongoing. So, you know, that, that, that is something that I, I could work on, as much as I, I tried, um, I, I could not get the entire thing completed, uh, you know, before this meeting. So that, that is the one section, uh, that presently isn't in there, but I feel fairly confident that I could get that article, uh, to you next month. And seeing how we have nothing, not even a disciplinary action pending, um, I think it's, you know, that, that would be a safe move, should you wish to adopt. If, if I didn't think it was, I'd recommend for you to, you know, wait on action.
So when was the last time this was revised? Like, a week ago?
Which one?
Oh, the, the...
Oh, the policy. We have three, we have three...
The policy, or I...
The policy.
Well, the policy is what's being presented now. You mean the current ordinance that we're operating on?
No.
When was the last time this was updated? Because I have, uh...
Revised the print.
I have one that I've been reading through.
I mean...
And looking, was it like yesterday? I know we got an email at seven o'clock last night. I was just wondering if it's something that I hadn't seen, or...
Has anything changed since?
Anything changed since the last one?
No, not, not since, yeah, eight o'clock last night is when I ran out of gas.
I was, Commissioner, Commissioner Hoffler. Because I, in my actual layer, I have three copies of personnel's policies with different dates on them.
But he's just saying that he's already read it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, yeah, I went through and read it again.
Yeah, this is...
And compared it.
It's, you know, it, this, the, the, the policy was originally presented by the MAPS group in 2018. Now, I don't know if there's been other modification, you know, from what I've heard, there's different modifications of that floating around, but I worked from what was in the actual binder that, you know, I, you know, that I was provided with Christie, which she said came, you know, right from what the, the MAPS group originally proposed. But, but no, I haven't, you know, uh, you know, changed anything since, since I, I sent it out.
All right. So how long would it take you to finish this?
Like I said, I've only got that one article left. It's the, uh, grievance and appeal. I'd, I'd be hopeful I could have that to you for consideration at, at your, um, at your February meeting, March at the outside.
Let's do, this is what I would, I would like to say. I would like for us, I don't like putting something in place that's not finished. I know it's been since 2017, we're working on it, and we're working on it, we're working on it, and we're working on it some more. Let's finish. Let's get it finished. Um, I would like to see it completed tonight, plenty of time for revision, or all of our eyes are seeing, you know? Uh, because I have read through this and the ordinance, looking back and forth. Uh, so ordinance versus policy. Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Ordinance versus policy. What's the definitions of it? I, I asked Mr. Guy when we do this, just so we are all thinking alike for the citizens, for every, everyone to know the...
Well, an ordinance is something that's more like, likened to by, uh, by law, and it is voted, uh, upon by all of y'all. It's, for example, no, it's ordinance. It's, it's a law, whereas a policy has more flexibility in it, and it is not, you're not bound by any statutory authority. You can, you can move it around a little bit to suit your own needs, but you still have to vote on, you still have a vote to change the policy.
Do I understand that this ordinance, anything that we needed to change, or we saw that was out of date, let's say we had this ordinance since 2006, we actually had to have a hearing to do it?
An ordinance, to, to amend an ordinance requires a, a hearing. To amend a policy, it doesn't.
So in other words, to, to change with flexibility, we see something we want to put in or take out, we have to have a hearing, a public hearing?
Advertised public hearing.
It's a public hearing. It's not like we, you know, we have a policy for the county, and if we see something as a commissioner, we say, "Okay, this has changed. Let's do so and so." We got to call a public hearing. We got to do this.
The example that jumps out at me, not tonight, months ago, when we talked about this, was that if, if something were to come up, and it's a first-time thing, and it's brought to the county manager's attention, and he says, "Wow, never considered that. That's never occurred." But we know what we would like to do and what we need to do, and what's best for our employees. We can go ahead and take action on it without advertising a hearing, um, you know, at our very next meeting, we could address it. I think it'd be something very simple, but we could, we can move like that, and a policy is, in my understanding, is less rigid.
I, I'd agree with that. Um, what I say, you know, policies are a little bit more elastic, because if it's an ordinance, when you, when you're looking at an ordinance, you're essentially looking at a regulation. So it really gets to read what the words say, and that's what you are supposed to follow. So, you know, you have very, you don't have a lot of leeway, a lot of elasticity. Now, what's written in this policy in terms of its amendment, and it's not uncommon, is that if somebody wants to propose a change to the personnel policy, it has to be presented in writing, which I think is a good practice, so everybody is reading the same thing, there's no mistake. And a lot of them do have a wait period, you know? So it's not something that's put on the approval under agenda. I have it in writing, but I really haven't had time to think about it. So what's written in here, which can be changed if it's a pleasure of the board, is that any change to the policy does require action by the board, no public hearing, has to be presented in writing, but it will not be considered until the next regular meeting. And that's supposed to give you time to, um, take a look at it. Couple of options to that, if you don't like that. I've seen it, you can just remove the 30-day wait. I've also seen where, when, in... I've also seen where, when, in ordinances and policies, that where you have that wait period, if that by, you know, unanimous vote of the board, if if by unanimous vote, you vote to suspend, because once again, it's a policy, it's not an ordinance, you can vote to suspend the 30-day. It might, you might deem it as an emergency situation, and if by unanimous vote, you could suspend that 30-day wait period and act on it immediately.
I would think setting precedence and being consistent, if you're using a policy, setting precedent and being consistent in what what you did. In other words, typically wait 30 days or next meeting day or whatever would be paramount in in case someone wanted to challenge it or something.
Yeah. And and sometimes, I mean, some board members have put it on there, because they they truly did. It's like, you know, maybe one or two of the other board members have really given a lot of thought, but it might be the first time a couple of the board members see it, and they say, you know, I'd like to try to digest this a little bit before I have to try to vote on it this evening. So it's, it's not uncommon in these types of policies, or or even in bylaws, to see that type of language, that changes to bylaws must be presented in in writing, and then there's a wait period, you know, before it's actually voted upon. But it's, you know, you can, you know, it's, all of that can be changed to to meet the pleasure of the board.
Also, one advantage, we've just gone through this at the Avramal Commission doing a new personnel policy. One of the advantages of it is regulations on the state and local level, I mean, state and national levels change that affect personnel sometimes, and this can be easily incorporated by having to do all the public hearings and all that. So you can keep your policy, your personnel policy up to date easier with a policy than you can with an ordinance.
Yeah, actually, actually, what I did in what was in the MAPS group, it it actually had some language straight out of the state statute, which which means, just to your point, if the state statute changes, you need to come into your policy document. I actually took those items out, because those are part of state statute, you must comply with those. You know, so so they're, yeah, exactly. There's no need to adopt it as a policy if it's already a statute and it's binding on you anyway. Keep your policy's policy and just let the state code and your local code do their thing, because you're going to have to follow those, they're mandatory anyway.
And and do I understand that we, that we have Personnel Board? With the policy, does that do away with Personnel Board?
This does not provide for a Personnel Board and and.
So it does away with Personnel Board?
Yeah. One thing that was a little awkward with the Personnel Board was that as the county manager always has the final say in a disciplinary matter. Basically, you exhaust all your administrative remedy to the top before it would go to some type of an appeal procedure. Under our ordinance, it was set that the chairman of the board was automatically a member, the county manager was automatically a member, and then the third member was another member selected from the board. Just about anything that came before, the county manager would have to recuse himself because he, you know, he can't, the county manager cannot sit, he or she cannot sit in judgment of their own decision. So that that was a little bit of an oddity of that Personnel Board.
Yeah, I always wondered about that, because I would have thought, I would have thought that someone with a lot of intelligence would make the entire Board of Commissioners on Personnel Board. Whether they could attend the meeting or not. But I mean, just normal intelligence will tell you, you, you know, what if you had a county manager that didn't make good decisions?
Yeah.
You know?
I I understand what you're saying, and it does get a little bit into the separations that discussed earlier, is that the the board does the organization, decides the employees and so forth, and then the manager is in charge of all matters of administration. And it's basically keeping both in each lane, because if you made the board legislative body the final say in the administrative, that might be considered contrary to what the state code is saying in terms of the manager having the final say. So some of them, you know, shy away from that, because they don't want to get in trouble with that that crossover that that could possibly occur.
Okay, do we have a motion? I think, Commissioner Cradock, you.
So I would like to make a motion to finish this policy and present it back to us. We'll bring it back to the meeting in April. That will give us time, give you two months to work on it, give us a month to review it, and come back in April. Does that sound right? No.
March be okay?
I I'd like to have a month to sit down and review it myself. It just takes, sometimes you read something three or four times, and you get something out of it every time.
I'll second that motion.
You have the the motion in the second, Adam Clark?
Yes, to finish the policy, present it back to the meeting in April.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're all, we did those together. Uh, the, uh, Gates County Board of Commissioners bylaws and Code of Ethics.
Can we, can we touch back one more thing on why we're on Personnel Policy? How many vacant positions do we have, do you know, right offhand?
What was the question?
How many vacant positions?
I have a, I just had Christie make it. In fact, what what I'll do, I I will send, I will send that out to all the board members tomorrow. But I did have Christie, because I, you know, I want to know by department and position, and I had her just prepare that. So I, if it's fine with board, I I will have that email to all of you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, um, where was I? Oh, the Gates County Board of Commissioners bylaws and Code of Ethics. This is another one that has been on, up for adoption. I think we worked on it a little bit at the retreat, worked on it last spring, last summer. I think we have about four or five copies of that. Commissioner Cradock, I mean, you got this one, this is short.
This one too.
This is short.
I'm good with this.
Okay.
I like a make a motion, let's go ahead and accept this. We do not, at the current time, have any bylaws in in the Code of Ethics for the board.
I'll second the motion.
It was motion by Commissioner Hoffler, seconded by Commissioner Freeman, ready to vote? All in favor? As have it. The final agenda item is the strategic plan. The strategic plan was finalized last spring. Done by North Carolina, a group called North Carolina Growth out of Chapel Hill. It's going, the reason I put it here is to put it on the website so that so that citizens can see it, and we can talk about it. Now, when you see this, it's filled with data, some of the data you heard tonight is in this plan. We're going to put it on the website so the citizens can see what Gates County looks like and their recommendation. This is not the strategic plan that we're going to use to go forward. We're going to use this plan to fashion or craft a plan for the county. I heard tonight about planning, we've talked about a plan from day one. So the strategic plan that we had, that we had crafted is to give us the data we need, the history we need, because when you look at it in the front, it's going to show 2011 about the strategic plan we did back in 2011, and it brought us up to date to 2021. So that's why it's on this agenda, so we can post it. The commissioners have seen it before, nothing has changed. It was done by our company, it was not fashioned without input. They even came on to Gates County and spoke to citizens and business owners and whoever else they could get to talk with them. They spent almost two days here, and they did a presentation at one of our meetings last fall. So it's not new to us, but we wanted to get it to the citizens, since we've all had two or three shots at it now, and we'll continue to look at it. And then we will ask you for input of what you think, what you see, as far as what you want to see in a plan going forward for Gates County. And you'll be hearing us talk about that going forward this spring and all this year, because we got to have a plan in place so that we know what, where we're going. So as people change, as positions change, we have a plan to move forward and not continue to drop the ball and not do what we said we were going to do, okay? So is there any other comments from the commissioners about the strategic plan? That's the, that's the only reason it's on the agenda, so we can get it on the website. Okay, all right, moving on. Finally, we have comments. Once we have the comments, I'm going to ask for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I'll go first?
Yes, you may.
Okay. We've said a lot tonight, we've heard a lot tonight. Glad we have a good crowd here to to join in. I want to encourage you to take, take in everything that you heard and talk to your friends and consult your commissioners. Send them an email, tell them what you think about what you heard, if you choose to. Thank you for being here. And just just one other thing, I I promised two phone callers, I think it was said here tonight, but I want to say it, because I told them I would say it. We are in favor of bringing 911 back strong to Gates County as soon as possible. And on regional, any regional stuff, I heard that. I think that got out there the wrong way. We are not pursuing any regional relationships where 911 is concerned. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cradock?
All right, 911 is coming back to Gates County. All right. All right, um, think about this land purchase. Email us, let us know what you think. If you have a negative and you don't disagree with it, bring us another option.
Amen.
So that's what I challenge you all with. Thank you all for coming, I would like to see this attendance every time. Thank you.
Commissioner Freeman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I'd like to to reiterate what everyone else has just said, so that also our citizens that are worried that they've not been getting the night 911 experience, and they are, you are. What has been hooked up through 911 is operating in Perquimmons County. It's not the best in the world, however, it is keeping you safe. There are always hitches, and there are going to be a few glitches, and there have been, but we definitely want you to hear that you are safe, and we're making you safe through EMS, the sheriff's office, and our 911 communications to get you the best help as quick as we can. And that, and that has been going on. So, like I said, there've been a few glitches, and I heard of one today. DOT wants me to remind everybody they're calling, that they're not calling Perquimmons County. They are calling Gates County, but it's in Perquimmons County. So DOT is having, has been having some difficulty. Sheriff overheard that conversation with me today, where they called and and they had a recent complaint on the 911 system. Like I say, good planning, we know that that's going on. One thing that I always like to bring to your attention, the chairman reminded me of that, is our COVID. One warning that came out today is about folks trying to maybe bring a mask to your house. So I did want to bring that forward to you for your safety and your security, and that is someone coming to your door and giving you an N95 mask or any other kind of mask and asking you to try it on at your door, maybe a couple of guys, and that's the way it's described, and then them robbing you or taking you down right then. Your door is open, you're, you're on the front porch or wherever. So keep that in mind, no need to open the door. If they're bringing masks up there, asking to leave them right there at the door, that'll be fine. The other thing is N95 masks are being made available by the United States Postal Service. You can go online and order those, and they'll be delivered to your post office box. So I believe a six that you can have is as a max right now, but that probably will increase as time goes along. Now, from our region, the the boosters, the recommendation, of course, still is those who receive Moderna or Pfizer, should get a booster within five months after their last shot. So everybody, I'm sure everybody knows that, but I want you to hear it again, because there's still folks that ask that question, and do get the booster. Now, children five to, I'm sorry, I skipped over. Those who receive Johnson &amp; Johnson get a booster two months after their initial dose. So children, the children at the age of 12 and older should receive a booster and a third dose of Pfizer. Five to 11 who have compromised immune system should also have a third shot. Now, just a booster, but a third shot. In Gates County, the figures haven't changed too much as far as as the number of vaccinations administered. I think I've been giving it to you, 3,600 first dose, 3,900 second dose. The figures that have changed, and these are not good for Gates County. We have 1,463 lab-confirmed positive results of COVID in Gates County. 79 active cases. Now, if you want to compare it, think about Carrituck. Carrituck has 60 active cases. Camden has 19. Hurford has 146. Perquimmons has 46. So again, Gates County is at 79. We have had 19 deaths, unfortunately, in the county. So keep that in mind. Now, where are we concerned about? Accourtius, our rest home, staff has 11 positive cases. So residents have five. So the staff has it because they're visiting, right, they're taking care of patients, and that's what's happening. At the Gates House, we have nine active cases, we have one resident with COVID. Now, again, the the figures that are are permanent in North Carolina State reported a total between January 8th and January 14th, 5,775 cases. So percent that are going in to be tested for COVID is 33.64% of folks being tested or being found positive. So there are figures for the COVID. If someone has any questions afterwards, please address them to me, and we'll see what we can do. Tonight, listening to you and and certainly being a part of of what goes on with you, because you let us know, you let me know, is we're gonna, we're gonna stay on topic. We are as brought to your attention many times the governing body, but we're the watchdog, if you will, for you. If you have a dog, they bark if someone comes up, we're the watchdog for you. We we look for a lot of different things, misappropriations. Is it, is it possible? Could it be? Don't know, but we are your body, and we always paying attention to that. We regulate, regulate, and overregulate, and that always bothers me. You've heard it tonight, some of the regulations, I am just not in for regulate, regulate, and overregulate. We got to figure out a way. I heard tonight, too, the tier one, you know, creating the economics. We should be a tier one county. We have voiced that, and we want our citizens to fight for that. But certainly, your administration, our governing body, should be fighting all the time to get us back to tier one, because that's where we are. We are tier one county, no matter what we do. But someone has has designated us as a tier two, which cuts us out of some funds, some grants, as the chairman will tell you and and reiterate that. I think that's about all I wanted to bring to your attention there, except I wrote down a little something that that I looked up, and America was not built on. a little something that, that I looked up, and America was not built on fear, America was built on courage, on imagination. Can you hear that tonight? That's what we want to do, we're looking for economic development, imagination, and unbeatable determination. So that's why we're sitting up here. We're determined to look after you, we're determined to listen to you, and we're determined to have that, and to do the job at hand, and that's, and that's what we're doing, and that's what we're going to continue to do for you. So let us know, shout out to us. We are your, your ears and we try to voice that and get it right back to you. Thank you.
Commissioner Hoffler?
I have two that we'd like to thank for all of you to come and voice your opinions. I would just hope that you would take some time to think about things you see posted and run them through a test, is this correct or not? There's so many rumors out there that are, that are unsubstantiated and in fact, in fact, totally wrong. But we, as a governing board, we are, our hands are tied. We cannot talk about certain issues to you because it would be a violation of personnel policies and ordinances. So on Facebook, they can say everything and we have laws and ethics that we require us not to say, we cannot say. And that's very frustrating sometimes when you know someone is telling you something that is 100% incorrect. I hope you will be wise up to that. I also, I'm going to be very brief. GEMS, our drive-through should be this week because it's the third week, but Vanessa, we are putting it off for a week because of the weather that is predicted in the, this weekend, for, not for our clientele that comes in, as well as for our workers, because it's going to be a messy time. And we certainly don't want to do anything to cause anybody to be sick. And also, listen, take care, be a good neighbor, check on your neighbors during the, if the weather comes in, we certainly don't want, I, I know you will, check on your neighbors and make sure that they are safe and warm and happy. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, may I say one more thing? I want to, my aunt celebrated her 103rd birthday, January 9th, so everybody wish her a happy birthday. She's got 103 more to go, is that right, Pitt? So at 206, we will be telling the same thing. So, thank you.
Happy birthday to you, Aunt. What's her name?
Ms. Edith.
Ms. Edith Salin.
Edith Salin Freeman. Go ahead, Freeman Salin.
Freeman Salin, okay. Happy birthday. County Manager?
Most all my issues have been covered. I would like to thank my staff, especially the great job they've done in terms of getting new staff and the equipment ready for the 911 center to, to open as soon as, as it's going to. We're working very right, very hard right now. Kristi Byram does an excellent job. She's trying to do her best to recruit and find people to fill the vacancies right now. The, the utilities department is definitely a critical priority.
Okay. We thank you for coming tonight. We hope to see you again next, next month. Don't forget that you're going to see a posting for the budget workshops or sessions we're getting ready to schedule in February. They'll be ongoing until we pass a budget, a balanced budget by July 1. The staff is currently working on that. Be mindful of the website. The agenda is on the website. The agenda goes to the Sunshine Chine list. Our meetings are published. We contact the newspaper, Gates County Index, and we also place it on our website. The meetings are live streamed, you can, you can record them, you don't have to watch them tonight, you can watch as many times you want to. They're recorded. So when I hear that they don't, we don't know what's going on, well, we're doing everything we have power to do with resources we have to publish everything. We did have a glitch in the Sunshine group this past few days, I think, thanks to Mr. Chestnut and Mr. Curry for resolving that. We'll, we use the word transparent, that's somebody's definition. Some things we just can't talk about, even though we know it's not true when we see it, we just cannot do that because exposed assets will risk lawsuits by individuals and lawsuits against this county. That is not an excuse, it's fact. Anyone who serves on a board knows that. Anyone that has employment in any organization know about personnel policy. And as this board sits here as the governing body, we also know there's a fine line between governance and administration, and if we cross that line too often, we're going to get a phone call. So we thank you for coming. I know sometimes we, we labor on, but we took our time, and I hope you see that in this agenda, we brought back the comments we had about water, advance payment, auto draft, all the things that sometimes you think you're not paying attention to, is just like Commissioner Owens said and all the commissioners. We have to do our homework, we can't go on feelings, because when we set policies, they have to be factual, and yes, we have to regulate, regulate, regulate. If not, we're going to get a phone call, especially from the auditors. Are we, we are human, just like everyone in this room and everyone that's watching. We're going to make mistakes, but they're not intentional, and we're going to err on the side of what's best for the county. And I know some of you are not listening, your minds made up, but that's okay because tomorrow is coming and maybe something will happen, so you'll see that we're all better together than separate. And as far as staff, we are recruiting staff in all, just about all departments. You know, when, when the county manager gives us those vacancies and where they are, you're going to see what we have not done in years past. When you see the technology, you will see what we have not done in years past. You know, I'm, I'm used to the cloud technology. The only cloud we have in Gates County is when it's cloudy day. That's how far backwards we are. And every time we try to move forward, to spend money to, to bring us to 2022, there's an uprising. But you want services. We want automatic readers or whatever we need. That takes infrastructure and moving from what we're used to, because we don't want to learn it or don't understand it, to supporting the citizens in this county. And we're going to do the best we can with the resources we have, with the, with the support we have. We don't have it, we'll move on. And 10 years from now, hopefully, preferably, we'll be a little bit better than we were in 2022. And finally, some of you have called me, not many, and you say I'm, I'm not, I'm not accessible. I'm retired, I'm home. You can call me, my, my number's on, on the website. My email's on the website, but you don't call me. You say you don't see me. I don't move around like others, I have underlying conditions, I'm very careful where I go. But just because I'm not there in person doesn't mean I don't support everything in this county by my time, talents, and treasure. So if you want to call me, you do that. If I don't answer, I'll call you back. That's all I can do. Communication goes both ways, it's not all-inclusive. And yes, I'm the chair of the board and I speak on behalf of the board because they elected me to do that, but I listen to individual citizens. Every last one of them, I hear you, I get your comments written. At our tables tonight, we had comments that were sent in, some of them were sent in kind of late, but we have them. What did I tell the commissioners? Look at those comments and glean from that what we need to address. The fact, if we, if we see something that's a theme in these comments that people send because they can't come, we're going to address it. You won't hear it in 30 days, you just have a, a Commissioner Crad talking about April. It takes time. And I'll close with this. Misinformation and disinformation has a head start on, a head start on everybody. The truth got to catch up. It has to catch up, and we're going to try to do that as a governing body, and you need to help us do that. I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We all adjourn.